Tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency. The Spring Hope License Plate Agency is recently under new management and features short lines and a friendly staff. Dealer work is always welcome, notary services are available, and copies can always be made. Wildlife services, hunting and fishing licenses, boat registrations, and boat title work is also available. Visit the Spring Hope License Plate Agency on Ash Street five days a week, Monday through Friday, 9 o'clock to 5 o'clock. Once again, tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency.
It is 7:02 actually, and Brent's not going to be up, Fisher's phone's not going to be up much, so we're going to go ahead and jump right into it and get started. So the first item on the call meeting order tonight is June 6th.
Black.
Black, okay. June 6th at 7:02, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is tonight's agenda. So we need to set the agenda, there's a couple of things I saw that weren't on there. The railroad bridge is not on there, I recommend we make that item L on your new business. And then also the code enforcers update is not on there. I recommend we put that after old business.
Because of, she's not going to, she's going to be on.
Okay, can I keep this one?
Yes.
Okay. So the two things I didn't see that were in our packet are the railroad bridge, pedestrian bridge, I recommend making that item L on your new business, and then the code enforcer report to come after old business, right, for town ordinance report. Do we need a motion for that?
Please.
Okay. So we need to get a motion to pass the agenda with those two additions.
May I recommend also, Mr. Mayor, by me, to move old business to the top of the agenda so that our guests can...
Chamber Mike Olson?
Yes.
Okay, all right. He'll be going first this time, and Mike, out of respect of your schedule, we'll move that up. Okay? So with those three changes, adding the pedestrian bridge, adding the code enforcer, and moving old business after, a couple of public comments?
My apologies.
Okay.
So will I make a motion?
All right. Do it again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, motion carries, agenda has passed. Next item on the agenda is the minutes from the board meeting of May 2nd. I'll give you guys a second to look at them as well. I'll go over some notes if I can, to get about some stuff that I'm seeing there. Commissioner Jeffries asked about details of where the North Carolina Royal Water Association got the data to determine the rate increases. I never saw that, they were mentioning there that it would be provided to us, where that data came from. Was that provided, about where the rates came from?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Also, Commissioner Jeffries noted during the manager's report that we need to note all times what's in our tanks, how much water is in our tanks, and how much water is being pumped out of our wells, and recommended manager to get quotes for anything he needs to make sure we know before. So, those are two things that are relatively important, one, which was pertaining to this, honestly, straight directly to the situation with the tower strain. I thought that should be added to the minutes, I mean, that was something that was really important that was brought up. And then, go ahead.
The mayor.
Okay, go ahead. We don't, we don't hear a lot from some of the commissioners, and so I feel like it's, it's important that when they do bring up something, they speak it because it's something they feel passionate about, so I think it should be included in the minutes. Under other business, I mentioned several things, which I gave you guys a list of that, but that's not in there. One of them was Meeks Cemetery, the end of Branch Street, the drop off near the railroad tracks at the top of the hill, Cemetery on Lewisburg. And these were, this was feedback that I got from the residents, and so the residents gave you this feedback instead of signing up for the public comment section. And so whenever a resident gives us feedback, I feel that it should at least be acknowledged in the minutes, and that's what this was. Chief noted that he got a truck for free last meeting. The mini truck, I guess it'll tell us tonight about the big truck, but I feel like when an employee makes note that they got something donated to the town for free, that that's important enough to go into the minutes.
And then, one last... If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It's, I do think that Michelle does a good job of hitting the highlights, but the minutes aren't necessarily a verbatim, they're to capture a flavor of the meeting. So if there are particular things you want to see emphasized in the minutes, that's fine, we can't, they can't be a verbatim, they're just what you...
Oh no, this is not verbatim, this is, these are just highlights, these are points. Commissioner Jeffries made some very valid points, important points, we're talking about rate increases that's going to impact all of our residents, and so if a commissioner mentions something about something that's going to impact all of our residents, it should be included in the minutes, that's not verbatim. That's just a highlight of what he was talking about. Likewise, if residents' concerns are brought forward, they should be included in the minutes as well. To touch on one more thing about the minutes, and this would be a policy change that the commissioners could make if they chose, but I personally feel that any concerns a resident brings to a meeting publicly, on record, then at the bare least, the board should respond to them the next meeting, on record. A lot of that stuff happens privately, and so by the time the next meeting rolls around, it could be as simple as, hey, we spoke with resident X, Y, Z, all of those matters were resolved on private, privately, okay, in the store. Maybe it was something that deserves a public response, but at the bare minimum, anybody that comes to us and puts a comment on record to the board, we should acknowledge them back at the very latest, at the, at the next meeting. So that they know, I mean, just even if we say, hey, we heard your concerns, and town manager's working on it. That would be something that I'd like for you guys to consider making a motion on, maybe at the, at the next meeting. What are y'all, what are y'all's thoughts on having, having, anybody that speaks publicly having a public response to them at the next meeting? If you build up strength to come talk to the board, and the courage to come talk to the board, do you feel like you should get a response, even if that public response is, hey, we spoke to the resident and issues were resolved privately, and that can be it?
I will say this, I think now we've set it up that there hasn't, they have to come before the town a week before, and at that time period, they'll give them their name and address, and then I think they're supposed to give us a, something of what they're going to discuss.
Mm-hmm.
I feel that at that time, I don't know why, if they come to that meeting and speak, that we shouldn't in some way or form be able to respond to a degree of that, to be honest with you. I think we should be able to. If we, if they do it as per, and give us that week's notice, and then we get that and receive those, will we receive those, Andrew?
Well, for Commissioner Jeffries, sometimes what we receive from people in terms of public forum is just they want to make a point to the board, so it's not necessarily something that we internally would need to address, but they just want to speak before the board.
Okay, well, it sounds like then, to a degree, you guys could vet that process somewhat, if it is something that would, I think that Michelle, or Sandra, or you would feel that it's something that we would need to address, then we would get that.
And, and we do, when it, when it gets to this point, we do tell you, like, these two people that are on here today, I mean, nine times out of 10 people call, and we can solve it in office, and we know we don't talk about that because it's been solved and it's over.
Yeah, if it's, if it's an issue that staff can actually resolve prior to getting to the board, we can just take care of it, that's standard operating procedure.
And if you guys take care of it, again, they came to the board to let us know, is it like...
What they think.
So, in the town manager's report, can you at least say, hey, we addressed these concerns that were brought to us at some point? We need to know that any concerns a resident brought to us were addressed, whether they were done privately, off the record, outside of the board's privy, even if it's just a simple, here's, here's who spoke, and this issue was addressed. Because the big complaint I get from people is, they come speak, no follow-up, nothing ever happens.
Yeah.
Would any commissioner like to make a motion that it be included some way in the part of the policy that town staff update us when someone speaks publicly in the form to us in the minutes? Well, okay. All right, next item, well, we need to approve the minutes, and what changes were made?
Two added, and old business moved before new business.
About the minutes?
Oh, it's right, sorry, you're right.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, but the necessary concerns.
Second, sorry about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, the minutes have passed with the necessary...
Dismissed.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the informal discussion and public comments. And first, we have Mr. David Beamer, you're up. Let us know, so informal discussion, I think this is the first time I've seen you come to speak to us, and so in this form, informal discussion time, you can speak with us openly about any concerns that you have, this is your time to come speak to us and for us to listen. If you're more comfortable sitting, you can, if you would just state your name and your address, and then let us know what's on your mind.
My name is David Beamer, I live at 211 Hopkins Avenue. I have concern about some police issues. In April, it had been shortly before the, the May meeting, I tried to get on the agenda, but it was too late, it wasn't, you know, the one week or two weeks, or whatever the thing was. But in late April, we, my wife and I were in our second floor bedroom, we heard commotion and fighting going on outside, we looked out the window, and there was a person with a gun pointing at another person. There was somebody that was, looked like they were trying to break up a fight, so there's three people on the street. We called 911, the officer responded, at that time, the person who had the gun had already gotten a vehicle and drove away. The other person that was involved in the fight, as, when the other person ran and got into the vehicle, they took a brick and they threw it at the truck, it hit the truck, like, right behind the driver's side door. The brick was laying in the street, when the responding officer came, I pointed out. There was also a rock that I assume was thrown, I didn't see that being thrown. When the responding officer came, the person that threw the brick just walked in the house. And then the other person that was, in, like, trying to separate the people fighting, I guess he was talking to the responding officer, and he told him there was no gun involved. The responding officer never asked me, what did the gun look like? He never asked me, what did the person look like? He didn't say, what did the vehicle look like? I went out there, and I pointed out that the brick was there. This is on the street that is right in front of the elementary school. I mean, what kind of a response is that? I mean, that doesn't make me feel safe, I wouldn't think anyone else feels safe.
Yeah, that's definitely a very valid concern. 211, is that, was this, which end of the street was this at?
We're in the middle.
It's about right in the middle.
Right in the middle?
Yeah, between Nash Street and the elementary school.
All right.
The two houses down, there were children outside in the yard while this all happened.
So this was not a day?
Yes, it was like in the afternoon.
I think it was a Sunday afternoon.
So let me ask this question, because you do, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Because there was an issue, and you have an issue with the way that it happened with the police, have you contacted our chief, because he does respond like that? Have you expressed those concerns, so that he knows?
I actually, after this happened, not to get into this big long thing about everything that happened, I have left my house and went over to Food Lion, and I saw the officer driving in his vehicle, and I asked to speak with him about it. And I just wanted to clarify, I was the person calling 911, no one ever asked to speak with me about what I saw or what happened. I said, is this going to be the total of your investigation of this issue? And I was told, yes, I hope you have a better day.
Yeah, that's a favorite, favorite phrase.
And so, I mean, this, we're not bringing it up on a single issue, we have quite a few other issues on that street with, not trying to steal your thunder, but loud music playing, and in the past, we were told what to do about that. They wanted us to call 911 and report it, even though we felt uncomfortable about that, because it's obviously not an emergency, but that's how they said that they would record that information. So we started doing that again. It had been good for a while, I know it has been presented to the board, not this board, I don't think, years in, in, years ago, and they kind of took it out and took care of it. So we started reporting it again, and then we were told by one of, by somebody, I don't remember who, an officer, that, no, we don't want you to call 911, we want you to call the non-emergency number. That's fine, that's great. Non-emergency number doesn't work when you call it, it doesn't transfer you to where you need to go.
On the recording of what happens.
And then, so we went back to calling 911, and we're not unrealistic, we don't think that the police should come every time we call them because of the noise, that people are driving away, but we just think that there needs to be some effort to stop it. So the last time we had called, the officer came to our house and pretty much scolded us for doing that.
He's giving a citation for asking for help with enforcing a town ordinance, that you can't, that you shouldn't hear music 10 feet away from, you can hear the lyrics or the bass.
He was very combative.
And I've asked the chief if he could speak to it, and that's, that's what the chief...
And so, I mean, we kind of are at a wit's end with the situation, and I know that neighbors may be they're not here, but they have experienced the same thing with the noise with the cars, they can't sleep, but I think that some people are afraid to report it.
Yeah.
But it's just like, I'm sick of it, really.
I mean, I can hear inside of my house, with the TV on, the windows are rattling. And the other thing, when the officers responded, scolding me, saying like, you know, he's been out here to my house five times or something, yeah, but I must have called 50 times, right? So five times, obviously isn't going to cut it, but every single time I called, he said that the, the cars weren't on my street, so why would he come to my house anyways, right? Like, this, I hear this in the middle of Hopkins Avenue, the cars are on Nash Street. Half the time, I can hear them, I'm sure they're down at the stoplight, inside of my house, with the TV on.
I guess, so we were just asking, like, can some, some sort of a campaign be done to let people know that they can't do that? I mean, the ordinance says they can't do that, but we're not enforcing the ordinance.
But the, the different officers have responded different times, there's others that have been very respectful, and far more, far more helpful, but this particular officer keeps giving the impression that, like, he can't do anything unless it's after 8:30.
Who is that?
I don't know his name, the one that likes to say, "Hope you have a better day."
He drives a truck.
The pickup truck.
I mean, we're not here to, like, air people's business, but we just want to see something being done. I mean, we feel like when we're calling 911, that we're the, we're the criminals.
Yeah, that's the way we're being treated.
Mission, anything like that?
No.
Absolutely not. This, and this is a good example of something that's my greatest concern, it stays as an open item on our commissioner's packets until it's addressed. I think it's a very valid concern, it's something that I hear all the time about noise, and especially the, and that's tough, right? Because if a car's moving, I think the law is it has to be within 100 feet for a set amount of time, or something like that. But if a car's moving, it's almost impossible to capture them. But some type of a campaign, I think that is a good idea, because we do get a lot of people on Nash Street that complain about the noise.
Yeah, I mean, I have to...
I mean, if someone gave you pullback for that, I would be like, okay, at least they're doing something. But it's been a situation where I've talked to officers, and I said, okay, well, I can tell you, it's between 5:30 and 8:30, I mean, sit on Nash Street, you'll hear it.
Mm-hmm. It's not like, you know, one...
Yeah, it's not just like a once in a while thing, which we would, of course.
I got a question, Mr. Manager, is this something that we can put as an item where you and the chief follow up with them, and then you communicate with the board back about some type of a campaign or any type of an action plan? Because it is a valid concern, and it's very alarming about the gun situation. Now, that's one side of the story, right? That's one side of the story, there's always a second side of the story. But out of respect of our residents, can this be something that has more follow-up other than them speaking, telling us, and us seeing that?
I would suggest to the board that you hear from the chief, and then we can discern what appropriate plan of action would be.
Okay, can the chief speak now? Or during his report?
That's up to you.
This is public forum, so... Okay. Chief, if you'd like to.
Can we add exhaust sound to that?
Exhaust sound?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You good? Great for me now?
I mean, we're done.
Okay, I didn't want to jump in if you still had some...
No, we don't have any more issues right now.
So, I view my guys' body cameras every morning when I come in, everything that they do is looked at, if I have any questions, I always call them in and we go over it. Going to the first incident that you were talking about with the disturbance where the fight, we have been to that house several times, they are family members, they do tend to consume alcohol on the higher level from time to time. The day in which that they were talking about, they were in a play fight type situation, the item that was being referred to as a gun was in fact a blue handled long cigarette or grill lighter, it was not a firearm. So, the biggest issue that I have with that, in viewing the body cam footage, was, is while this was all going on, that Mr. Beeman did walk over onto the property, agitating the impaired subject that the single officer was already trying to deal with on his own. They told him to get off his property, which, to argue back and forth between Mr. Beeman and him, and then Officer Beeman had to take himself away from the situation he was dealing with to get, go back over it to, for Mr. Beeman to go back to his property. That situation was handled, no one was assaulted, they wanted to press charges, the officer handled it out with, you know, just basically just a verbal warning on that, if you're going to consume alcohol inside, you can't be out in the yard acting like that in public. As far as the noise complaints go, we are actively working, excuse me, we're actively working on that right now, to the fact where I have been putting undercover cars on the street, I have myself gone and spoke with residents on Hopkins Avenue and Nash Street, all of which said that they do not have any concerns with any noise coming from any vehicles. They do say from time to time that late at night, cars do come through with loud music, but it's not to a point to where it would warrant someone calling 911. The biggest complaint that I'm having is for loud exhaust, so that's what we're working on now, the officers are actively working on loud exhaust, I've got 45 traffic stops from the officers this month. With the major issue with the fuel price, the officers are still going out and being proactive, they've got 45 traffic stops. But going back and reviewing, Mr. Beamer resided at 211 Hopkins Avenue, from the date starting on February 25th to present, he has contacted 911 16 times, calling in loud noise complaints. I do not have any other 911 complaints from anyone in that area within four to five block radius for any loud noise complaints. Like I said, I have sat there myself in my unmarked car, I have responded in my unmarked car, the officers have responded in their unmarked cars. One time, they were there probably about 30 minutes before the call came in, and they did traffic for about an hour in that area, where they were not able to locate anything. The officers are being very proactive, I've got a hardworking group of guys, if they see something, they're going to enforce it. With that being said, I've got one guy at a time working at certain times, and I can't dedicate that person to that one area. So, what I have is, is, they basically do a checklist for me, especially on the weekends, when I come in, I give them trouble streets. Also, at my Spalding School, I've been getting a lot of complaints about speeding and loud music and loud exhaust in that same area, also even some possible pre-range racing. So what I do is, I tell them to hit the hot spots, and every morning when I come in on the whiteboard, I want to see where they were, how long they were there, how many citations were issued, or how many verbal warnings or traffic stops were done, so I know that they're being proactive and actively trying to take care of it. We cleared an area out over by Spalding School for them to be able to sit over by the work shed, to be able to run radar all the way down to that area, and I've got permission from residents on Nash Street to sit for the loud music. They have not been able to find anything for loud music at this time, we did hear some music from there, but, when they, I say we, they did hear some music when they were sitting stationary on Nash Street, but it was from over on the other side of Food Lion, on Lewisburg, going out of town, and they weren't able to locate that vehicle.
Can I respond to one thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
I know, when you talk about the first incident with the lighter, I'm sure they said it was a lighter, but it was a blue, we looked it up on the internet, it was a blue Glock.
Yeah. How would they know? No one asked, no one asked what vehicle, did they get into the...
I'm sure the people were...
Yeah, the person that had the bike says, oh yeah, it's just a lighter.
It's like I, like I just advised the board, I viewed the entire body cam footage of it, and several people were asking, they actually presented the blue handled grill lighter that we used.
It's impossible, because the person, the person who had the gun was in the truck, he wasn't at the house.
It's fine, I mean, the cop wasn't there, so the video wouldn't have pulled anything.
So you're saying the person that had the gun, after they brandished her, whatever, they left, the police got there?
They left, in the truck, it was a giant, giant white truck, it said Western Express.
We said, why is there a semi on the street? And then the altercation started.
The person that threw the brick was at the house.
I mean, that's fine, I think that, like you said, I think that they were family, and it was the altercation, but three witnesses in my house said it's a gun, and it was a gun, or I wouldn't have called 911.
Were you going to listen to the people that are, you know, in the ball? Oh, it's not a gun, yeah. And I was standing on the sidewalk.
You know, I don't, personally, I don't, and it may just be people don't take the time, or they don't, you know, feel the need to, but I don't personally hear or come across a lot of complaints directly about the police department, and so when I hear one, it alarms me, and I feel like that this is something that definitely should be followed up on. And I think it's something, campaign, I know that we spoke about the speeding on Pine, it's great to hear that you've got a campaign for the park, but I think that we need to have some additional action taken on this.
The last time that I was being scolded with the threat to write a citation because I was calling 911...
You got a citation?
No, no, no.
They said that we're going to...
He's going to give me a citation for calling 911, so my, my neighbor came out to ask what was going on, and I explained, and she, she has never called anyone ever about the noise, but, and I've never talked to her about the noise, I've never, I'm not super close, I know each other, like, you know, we're friendly, but like, I don't go sit on her porch or anything like that, and she was, she said just the night before, she couldn't even go to sleep, she was like, it's so bad, and... And she said the same thing?
That it's on Nash Street.
I mean, it's...
It's not on Hopkins Avenue.
The thing is, we're not going to sit here and argue about it, that's not really saving any time, but I mean, we wouldn't be wasting our time calling about it if it wasn't a problem.
Yeah, crank calling 911, like, when I'm inside of my house, they're like, you know, which, what did the vehicle look like? Which direction did it go? I'm like, I don't know, I'm inside of my house, it's not even on my street, it's on Nash Street, that's how loud it is. So if I called 16 times, that's how many times it happened.
I left a part out just a second ago, so, Mr. Beamer's been advised twice, once by Officer Lucas and once by Officer Lindhar, for the importance of calling the non-emergency line, and he stated that he's trying to call the non-emergency line, but it's not working. I've got body cam footage also of the officer there, giving him the number to make sure that he's dialing the right number, and the officer actually dialing the number on speakerphone, waiting for someone to answer to confirm that that non-emergency number is working. And when they answered, of course, he said, I was just making a test call, just making sure the non-emergency line's working. So, Officer Lucas advised Mr. Beerman on February 25th about the importance of the non-emergency line, and that there would be a charge, that you could possibly be charged for misuse of 911, for calling 911 on a non-emergency. And then again, on May the 15th, Officer Lindhar also re-advised about the misuse of 911.
So Officer Lucas gave me a handwritten number, which I put right next to my telephone, it's a Lamb line, which I called multiple times, no one ever answers, and I made a recording of it, which I played for the other officer on that day. I said, this is what happens when I call that number.
I can't speak to the dispatch phone, but I feel like my, my officers are one above and beyond to try to take care of the problem.
Well, he gave me the wrong number.
And then after, the second one gave it to us, we haven't called the... And then after, the second one gave it to us, we haven't called the non-emergency number since then.
The one he showed worked, I haven't done it because he wrote that one down for me. Now, that one's the next to my phone.
From an administrative town manager standpoint, what would you recommend as a follow-up? What's the action on this?
Well, first and foremost, I spoke to Ms. Beamer last month when she did sign up actually, or requested to sign up to come speak to the board. And I spoke to the chief right away. I spoke to her, I spoke to the chief, and he said he would take action, contact Ms. Beamer. So, right off the bat, we don't wait around for people to come to board meetings, we take action. And that's what we did. I spoke to her and asked her if she still wanted to be on the agenda and she said no. So, so in terms of a campaign, I know that enforcement is, is tops on the chief's list. Noise complaints are difficult. By the time an officer responds, the person's long gone. So, and it's not just here in Springfield, it's all over, loud exhaust, loud music, they're difficult to enforce. So, yeah, we can talk about a campaign, we can run those through the summer, but typically just like speed enforcement, the minute the officer's gone, the problem returns.
I don't want to say a lot of the, because you guys are right there and they're coming on Nash, a lot of them are turning down Lewisburg. And an officer actually does sit in my yard from time to time to try to catch noise, speeding and everything. We actually move our cars so that they can sit right there and pull out to try to catch some of the noise, but when you're going down to Lewisburg, they, they hot telling it, so.
Oh, yeah.
But they're trying.
We understand, but the problem is every, we've called nineteen times and you think someone would say, hey, maybe we need to talk to these people and tell them we're trying to do something about it.
I've been to you, I'm sorry, I've been to your residents twice and none of them's there.
But we work, I mean.
And I did, and I asked the chief to reach out to you to touch base and he has told me that he's been to your house before. So, and that's just a thing, right? You're not home and, but, I mean, we do follow up. We want to make sure that citizens feel like they're being hurt. We hear them. We can't work miracles. I mean, we do what we can and we continue to, will continue to do what we can.
This was a big problem several years ago and I called 911 hundreds of times, hundreds of times, which is exactly what the police officer at that time said to do, including, and I went, I came to this board meeting several times and it was resolved. I mean, there were years of where like it was the most occasional thing, you know, like.
And you said that you already have a campaign.
The Governor's Highway Safety Program does campaigns periodically throughout the year. We actually just ended one yesterday.
Okay.
And basically what that does is the officers can choose certain things to do during that campaign, whether it be checkpoints, whether it be speed, whether it be wolf packing, which means another ABC were to come in and they stop a bunch of cars in one area, like focusing on that area. And what we did with this campaign with the complaints was I had officers sitting in driveways, listening for loud music. And, but the problem with that is, is when you're doing a campaign for such as Governor's Highway Safety and you label it a wolf pack or you label it one of the campaign issues, it has to be conducted for at least an hour. So, if the officer does this campaign and he's listening for loud music and that's the campaign he's going for and he sits there for an hour and has no charges, then the police department, but I left a part out, it is a point type system. So, what you do is you, you complete this campaign and however many citations you get, you add it to the list and it's, or verbal warnings or any type of enforcement action and you submit that. I did a wolf pack, these enforcement actions were done. And you submit those to points through the Governor's Highway Safety Program. And then what they do at the end of the year is they say, okay, you have all these points, now you can turn that in and get a free radar, or you can turn that in and get a free caution sign or a speed trailer, depending on how many points you have. So, that's, that's basically how we got our radars. We got our radars off the Governor's Highway Safety Programs and we got our speed trailer, the speed trailer we have, that was awarded to us free off the Governor's Highway Safety Program. So, we're consciously working campaigns. We're doing it every chance we get because I think everybody here knows me and I love free stuff. So, that's, that's, I'm a hundred percent involved, I'm a hundred percent on board with it. I just, I want the Beamers to understand, whether you see it or you don't, we are actively trying to work on the problem.
That's all, that's all we want.
I have a black Dodge Durango, I don't know if you see it on your road, but I sit out there from time to time. The other guys have a black Charger or purple, a blue Charger. I've got pickup trucks, I've got all kinds of stuff. So, you know, if somebody comes around the corner and they have their radio on before we can hear it, if they see a patrol car, they're obviously going to turn it down. But when we're out there in unmarked cars trying to do enforcement actions.
It's usually on Nash Street, not on ours, very rare.
Right, I sit on Nash. I got permission from two residents on Nash, one down towards Food Line.
You were saying you have an old campaign or you have a new when you're fixing to run?
No, there are campaigns periodically that come and that's what we're involved. We do those campaigns. We're not just ending. I mean, we don't have to label it a campaign to be able to do enforcement actions.
Can you bring together a campaign in the garden desk and send it over to whoever?
I'm sorry, but, Andrew, can we kind of, because we're over and I know we had some who had additional meetings, can we kind of tail this for you and chief to kind of get together?
Sure.
Because we've got some who had all the stuff that had to go through, we moved up.
What kind of? If it makes you feel even better, you're not only hearing yours, it's all over town. It's on Nash Street. It comes from Rant Street all the way on to Nash Street.
I'm sure.
I'm serious, yeah, I mean, so.
And I'm sorry, it took up so much time, we didn't want to make it a little meeting. But like I said, the only solution is what if someone would have just said, hey, and I know you tried to get to us, but hey, we, we understand you having the problems and we're doing something about it.
Okay.
I'll just add two things. I'm, I work every day, Monday through Friday, I'm here six o'clock in the morning to about two or three every day. If you have any problems coming to me, I think every person up there will tell you that I'm normally really quick to respond to stuff like that. As far as a campaign goes, Mayor, it doesn't have to be labeled a campaign. Basically, what I'm having the guys report every day to me on the board showing me that they're out there can act as that, it doesn't have to be labeled a campaign. When they're actively doing it, we're not giving points for it or anything like that.
Just all of some of this of what you did to respond to that.
I've got.
Next meeting.
Bring the list.
Just bring, you know, here's some actions on these days we did this.
Sure. But I mean, like I said, it's not documented, no enforcement action is done because it's other than, I know you're there. You know, that's, that's the type of situation.
Andrew, you'll follow up, right?
All right. Next speaker is Tara Hemmerite about hurricane preparedness.
My name is Tara Hemmerite, Level 213 East Railroad Street, Spring Hope. June 1st, March, beginning of what is expected to be an above average hurricane season with fourteen to twenty-one named storms. Between six and ten of those hurricanes will be between, will be hurricanes and between three and six of those are predicted to reach category three, four, or five levels. Spring Hope is a relatively low, low flood risk overall, however, many of these storms generate high winds, tornadoes, and torrential rain, rains. Given how the town has hanged of recent situations, I would like to know if there's an emergency response plan, what it is, what is it, and when was it last updated? The town meeting last June, actually one year ago, yes, tomorrow, was the first meeting immediately following a multi-day water outage. During that meeting, it was suggested that the town should have stepped up and provided at least non-potable water for the citizens' use. A glider system was suggested and town commissioners noted that they would look into it. Was this done? Is that plan in place? If we have prolonged power outages, do we have generator backup for the wells, the towers, or the sewer processing plant? The town has been informed already about the amount of runoff and storm water that is saturating or already overwhelmed water in sewer systems. What was sustained heavy rainfall due to our sewer treatment plant if there's no electricity to the system? Another concern is communication and notification during a true emergency. During that same meeting last year, we were informed that town's robocall system can take up to four hours to reach the town citizens. And relying on town's Facebook page excludes many, many of our non-computer literate citizens. This needs to be improved. It was discussed a year ago that it needed to be improved. And that, it was also suggested in that same meeting that the Code Red system that the county uses might be a good alternative use. Was this done? Was this looked into? Where are we on this? What about communication between the emergency services and subcontractors here in town? The recent fire downtown brought to light that perhaps there needs to be a better understanding and communication of what the fire department needs in terms of water and access. And I'm going to back up a minute to address what the mayor mentioned about citizens' concerns being followed up on. I personally come before the board, not necessarily you all, but over the years, I've come to the board complaining about a dog that has barked incessantly, and I'm not exaggerating, for thirteen years. Never, well, excuse me, I did get one response. I had one drunk commissioner come to my house. Never followed up. Dog's still barking. I called about dogs being on the loose, come and spoke before the board. No response, no follow-up. I came and spoke about the chickens. The response to that was to approve it, but I personally was never followed up with any issues that I had come to the board. With as much hot water as this board seems to get, I would think that you all would want as much citizen support and buy-in as possible. And I think doing what he just suggested would go a long way. Even if it's just to say, these were the citizen concerns last week, last month, this is what was done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a printed copy that could, Andrew, keep that and see what some of you may be working on, some relative we could look into?
So, I would like to know if, you know, next month's meeting, when I attend, maybe I can get some answers to those questions. Or even sooner.
Thank you. All right. And now, the next item on the agenda, we are moving old business in front of new business. Thank you both for speaking. Old business and we'll start with item C, if that's okay. I think you needed to get out of your mic. You want to go ahead and present yours?
I'm not going to hurry.
Who was it that he pushed it in front of? Was it you that needed to get out early? Yeah, okay, come on, Mike.
Okay. Good evening. Thank y'all for letting me come back. I think I was here on the night of a very important ballgame that everybody wanted to get out, so we couldn't quite finish this report on the distribution system for the town. And so, I am Mike Olson with Knight Associates. We have been working on the asset inventory assessment for the Santa Fe Sewer System, which we've, we presented that night. And we began the summary of the distribution system, the water, drinking water distribution system that night, but didn't quite get to wrap it up. You guys have had it, I guess I can go back through the quick five-minute, hey, this is the condition of the system, but I also am here largely to make sure you guys have questions answered and anything like that that I can do. So, I mean, I'll go into this real quick and then take some questions and hopefully you guys can at least have a better picture and we can get this document formalized and you guys can, can see the state of the water distribution system. So, overall, the existing distribution system in the town is in poor condition and we based that on several, several different conditions, partially because of the age of the actual mains and fixtures and apparatus in the town. The town has about ninety-six hydrants, fire hydrants, and if I say ninety, ninety-five, excuse me, and forty-five of those hydrants are over forty years old. That means that you've got hydrants that are, you know, much older than, than their service life needs to be. Some of the hydrants approaching sixty years old, there are several that don't have dates on them at all, which means they are nineteen fifties, nineteen forties hydrants. That puts them seventy, eighty years old. Some of those can't be dated. But over, almost half of the town's hydrants are in that age, which means that the pipes associated and connected to them are in the forty to sixty to seventy year range. So, the state looks at the condition of water mains and says that a water line is past its usable service life at forty years, which means that you either need to begin to plan for replacement, rehabilitation, or, you know, or, you know, just trying to limp those along in sections of town if you don't have any issues with them. There are lines in town that you may not have any issues with that are seventy years old because they're old cast iron pipes, they're in good solid, you know, solid ground and have never been shaken very much and you've never had any issues with them. That may be the case, but if one breaks, it is very difficult to fix because it can drain a tank in a very quick, in a very quick manner if you are not prepared for it. You don't know when water mains are going to break. They seem to tend to break at three o'clock in the morning, at the most inconvenient time or when everybody needs a shower. But for the most part, after a deep freeze, you start seeing the ground moving a little bit and you start seeing water mains break and, and leaks appear that are from ground shifting just a tiny bit, even though there are three to four feet in the ground everywhere and you wind up having issues with ground movement and settling. You also have an active railroad, so that shakes the town a little bit, shakes the ground in those areas, but those are the oldest mains in town. And so, they are at their, end of their service life and should be considered for a replacement project and if not a replacement project, at least a clean and rehabilitation project that would clean them and scour the insides of the mains to possibly remove rust deposits and tuberculosis that may be affecting pressure, may be affecting, may be affecting the actual capacity in the lines and things like that. So, with that, with that being said, you know, that's the general condition on the hydrants and a lot of the pipes and that's how you age pipes other than using existing maps that you have when you can date things back to exactly. The town didn't have a lot of usable water line maps. We did find a few down at the wastewater treatment plant that we could use and we've scanned those and put them in the digital form for you. And hopefully, we'll be able to get you a hard drive of all of that stuff on it so you can use it in conjunction with your GIS model that was put together. And then one thing we also did was we took water tests on your four existing ground wells. So, I've got those with me tonight. I can't, I've shared them with Andrew. I don't know if I've gotten them to everybody and I have them with me and I can make them a part of the report. We did that as part of the, of the overall, I think at the last meeting that I was here, we didn't have the results sent back yet. I think we were getting ready to meet to take the samples. So, I've got, I've got them, I don't have what I would call, you know, profound limits on them or anything like that. They all have some pH issues with the water that's being generated out of the ground, but most of them are within, are within limits on the contaminants that we look at for health standards that you look at. Now, there's a lot of contaminants you look at that are nuisance contaminants, but they aren't necessarily health hazards. Iron and manganese are two of them. And you guys know what iron and water smells like and looks like and manganese tends to be little black, you know, black spots and everything like that that you see coming in water. So, you have a couple of, a couple of the wells that are a little high on those and the main one that is that constituent is the Montgomery Well, which I think is probably one of your least used wells and I defer to the byline for that. I don't know how much they're pumping out of each well every day. And I don't, I don't think, the day we took the samples, he was telling me that it was one of the lower volume wells, but that could be one of the larger contributors to your iron and manganese coming into your system. It wasn't, it wasn't astronomical, but it was, it was higher than you want it to be and it's considered a secondary contaminant. So, it's a, it's a nuisance contaminant, but it's not a health hazard. But other than that, you had some hardness and some turbidity, which is expected in wells with varying pHs and with, with hard water. You can expect that when you have iron in the mains, but you have, your well water is not the place I would start looking for improvements just yet, simply because I think there are plenty of two-inch galvanized mains in the ground that are probably the contributing factors to some of the other rust and tuberculosis in your drinking water distribution system. Now, I haven't pulled samples on two-inch lines, but you have a lot of two-inch lines in the system according to the maps and what we've been able to discern from just the layout of the system. Over, let's see, I've got some numbers in here, I don't want to tell you wrong. So, the town has about eighty-nine thousand feet of water in the ground, of water lanes in the ground. And that's including some well lines running all the way out to the Spring, Spring Hope Road Well, which is, I mean, a gracious long line. But you, you know, you range in line, in line sizes from ten inch to two inch and seventy-five percent of the system of that eighty-nine thousand, some sixty-seven thousand feet of that line is six inch and smaller. And I don't have an exact number on how much two-inch diameter. You do have a good portion of it in there, but it wasn't enough to outweigh how much six inch you have. But there's enough in there in the problem areas and the low line areas that may be But there's enough in there in the problem areas and the low-line areas that may be apt for a good two-inch main replacement program to get galvanized water mains that are known to be well past their service life and have really been, quit being used in the, in the early eighties. They quit being used because PVC was becoming more prevalent, and people started using that a little bit more often. And so a two-inch main that is galvanized, that's in the ground, is at least twenty-five to thirty years old. It's well past its service life and honestly probably failing and contributing to quite a bit of rust deposition in the system. But that is, you know, the basic outline of the condition of the system. We did go through as part of this, and we put a capital improvement plan together for the town. That is in the, I think that should be in what you have. But just a synopsis on that, the ten-year capital improvement plan estimates a need for investment in the system of approximately seventeen million dollars. That's over ten years. But that is just adding up all of the projects that we have identified for main replacement. There is a well filtration, well filtration project in there that can be moved out in future years if you do see that the contaminants in the wells continue to pick up or continue to be a problem. But there's a flushing and a hydrant replacement project. There's also a valve insertion and placement project in here for putting the necessary and needed valves in the system so you can isolate portions of the town, just in case there's a main break. You can isolate the tanks, you can isolate this street instead of having to cut half a town off in order to be able to be with that water. That way you can run these towns off of, and float them off of one tank, both tanks, one tank, no tank, and you can just run the wells to boost things up. Now, that's an approach to managing your water system, and that's, that's got something to do with operation of the system and just how you check in with your operator and how they're willing to run the system in those situations. But putting valves in and cleaning some of these, some of these six-inch lines that may not necessarily be too far gone, too clean, would be a very, a very good, well-put exercise that would not spend, you know, ten million dollars on the front end to still be chasing a problem that hasn't been solved with part of it. And those are just some suggestions. Put this, put this capital improvement plan in front of you with a schedule on it for you guys to kind of consider, and it's not something that you have to adopt, it's something that we use as a guide to kind of show you what you can do and how you can possibly benefit from a little bit of asset management on this end to keep from having to do capital projects that are going to be so capital-intensive on the front end. So I'll drop it there for the ten-minute summary and be happy to answer questions and see if there's something I missed that I can maybe dive into a little bit for anyone.
How, on day-to-day residents that live here, their quality of work, how much do the ice pigging impact that quality?
So ice pigging, ice pigging is a very, you know, pigging, ice pigging, flushing, hydrant flushing and everything like that, it's, it is part of a flushing program that is meant to scour the insides of the lines. What it's going to do on the front end is it's going to, it's going to remove a lot of deposits, biofilm, it's going to remove a lot of tuberculosis inside the pipes. The town theoretically should see, you know, better pressure because the lines will be put back to generally a six-inch line that's got heavy tuberculosis, maybe acting only like a two-inch line. And so you may see a little bit better pressure, a little bit better flow at your house, but you should also see some of the major deposits that you have been seeing in the form of rust breaking off of the inside of those lines and anything like that. You should see a lot of that dissipate. Now, will it fix water that has a lot of iron in it that's coming from the well? No, but it will, you know, routine flushing and on top of, you know, ice pigging would certainly help, you know, improve and maintain if you flush or behind that with a good flushing system. The only way to keep lines clean is to, is to pig them and then to, you know, to clean them and scour them just like that, or replace them with lines that are not going to necessarily tuberculosis and rust on the inside like PVC. And that is an option, but it is an option that is incredibly expensive because tearing up the streets to put new mains in is labor-intensive, it's very expensive to get pipe at all right now because of the supply shortage that we're seeing worldwide. But in truth, pigging is something that could possibly render you some relief on, on a sidewalk, it will render you relieved. I just, I don't know what the insides of those pipes look like, but I can tell you with the ages they are, they're going to be rusty and tuberculated and need to be cleaned, and it will improve. Now, it needs to be maintained and continuously maintained in the future. Continue flushing, continue unidirectional flushing to keep rust moving and out of the system and move on from there. So I will say that, you know, it'll be, you know, the cleanest water you ever saw immediately, but it will, it will begin to improve as long as you continue to stay on top of the maintenance that comes after that.
That's the quickest, easiest way to get clear of work.
It would, it would be, or the quickest and easiest way would be to, be to put new pipes in the ground, because you're only going to be able to do a few blocks at a time because you're going to have to shut down parts of the system. So these projects is going to need a little bit of another project, it's going to need a valve here to make sure you can maintain this portion. The way you typically put the ice in the system is to put it in through the fire hydrant bonnets, and then you flush it out from another fire hydrant on the other end. We already know that we've got hydrants that are sixty or seventy years old. I'm not so sure that you want to stress them from the opposite direction in which they're supposed to work sometimes, you know, and there may need to be a valve inserted here and on the other end so that you can isolate this portion of the street, pig the whole street and clean it out, and then you can go and do flushing and put a maintenance box on everything.
I've got to say something. Our system is antiquated, make no mistake about it. Our system, they cannot shut it down, make no mistake about it. I don't care what they say or what anybody says, it cannot be shut down. And if we go in there and aggressively start flushing these hydrants in both directions, this town's going to be shut down on a regular basis, patching the pipe. We've got to get our eggs in order to do any of this. And we need to understand that. I want to make this statement before we get a big presentation tomorrow on Facebook, that this is what needs to happen, because until we can shut this town down into zones, we can't do that.
That's right.
End of story. And I'm just telling you this from experience, being in some towns in Alexandria, Virginia, where they are ancient towns. And I, my crews have blown some pipes up.
Well, that's, and to that, to that point, I do believe that that's why it's a CIP that can be moved around and dedicated. What I think, and I apologize, it has been a month since I've really studied this and put this CIP together, but I would say that one of the things that we do in our CIPs is we make them into integrated capital projects, at least that's my term for it, I don't know if it's not trademarked anywhere, I hope not. But the bottom line is if we can make a project, like an annual project, to insert a few valves to help, you know, and fight off fifty thousand dollars' worth of this work this year, fifty thousand dollars next year, get me five valves in this year, get me ten valves in next year, get me twenty valves in, and let's find the zones where it is. Pigging would help clean the lines. It wouldn't necessarily make it so that you could oscillate them, you would need these valves in place in order to be able to pig. And so the truth is, probably the most, the most important, or what I would say is one of your priorities, is to make sure that when you have a two-inch water leak, you don't have to shut the whole town down to fix it. And what I would say, the only way to do that is to valve exercise and to go and find the areas in town where you can zone off and put insertion valves and things. And that is, that is, you're not the only town that I see this in, and you're not the only town that I recommend it in. I know dozens of towns that cannot isolate their system effectively without having to close four blocks because of anything, or shut a school down because they can't, you know, and that's the absolute worst. Nobody likes doing that, but you got a school in this town, and you have to shut the whole town down, they got to send everybody home from school, and that is very, very time-consuming. So, all that said, you know, what I would say is the valve process and the valve evaluation and insertion program that's in, is one of those listed projects, would be what I would consider something that you would do either all up front or do it as a integrated project that you can make your, you know, hey, we're going to budget fifty thousand dollars for this this year, we're going to put them in, we're going to put five more in per a plan that we put together that gets all of this done. That can be fairly easily sorted out because the town's fairly easy to isolate into zones because of just the way it's laid out and having a, this side of the trash, you got tanks on either side, you've got, you've got a lot of benefits that you can run this system in zones like that and have as few people out at a time. And that's a, that's something that just takes planning and an effort to do, so.
I think we should talk about valves and the cover, isn't it?
Well, you've got to have money, but your statement too you made was, we have been able to get a report from, about our fire hydrants more in depth. We've been able to receive that, and we know more about it now than even what you said. I think what you've said correlates with that report very close.
Is that, that agrees with what we said?
Oh, I agree, so. I don't think that's far from it. And I like what you said about, we got to be very cautious of what we do with the hydrants that we have right now until we can replace them all, and to replace them all, you're millions of dollars, of course.
Well, you know, a seven-year-old hydrant, you can't, you know, you got to go pick a, pick a brand and stick with it and go with it. A seven-year-old hydrant, the reason you think it's seventy years old is because in the nineteen-sixties, they started dating every hydrant, and it was manufactured, it's cast, the barrel, the barrel of the hydrant has the date cast in it. So you got one without a date on it, or it might be buried, but for the most part, if you walk around and you see a hydrant without a, without a date on it, it's older than you are most times. And that's, that's something to just, you know, consider. Not sure that I would trust it if I had to put a valve wrench on it and open it up and try and get two thousand gallons of men out of it by fire. And that's, in the end, that's why they have a usable life, they say forty years, and you look at it, you may maintain them and keep them in great condition, but that's obviously not happening in some areas.
That is, a lot of them are Columbia's, can't get parts for them, so they're...
You may as well, you may as well pick a cloud and go with a standard model and have...
I think we have. I believe we've, we've looked at that and we've made a decision on that aspect, especially with Tom White starting to need the house, places to put these hydrants in there. So I think that's something that has, has started from that. But, no, I got to ask you one more thing for Bobby. I know when I was with you at the treatment plant, did you get a set of plans that showed that treatment plant when it was built?
I had got a set of the plans when the, the package was put in for that section. I've got them scanned.
Could we get those plans?
Of course, of course, yes. I can get you the paper ones back, and I've got them scanned as well. Some of them are pretty poor condition.
Yeah. We may have that already, I don't know. But these plans were found, and I'd like to get them and give them to Bobby if he needs them, and if he don't need them.
Sure, and I, you know, he's welcome to, you know, come and make copies at our office where he needs to have them, but I'll get the drop-offs in to you, and they're all scanned, and I'll stick them all in there. That way you guys will have them.
Thank you. Any of the source materials that you got from us, we appreciate them back.
Absolutely. Some of them were in unscannable condition.
Yeah.
And I would, I would recommend to you, if we could get a good scan off of them for burning the ones that were in there, because they were locked in the wastewater plant for a while. And they, we had to put them in our back room and they were out for a couple of months.
I'll send them to Andrew's office when I get them.
People know, people know that they do. They do say that it runs downhill. But yeah, I can probably do that to you, that's going to come along with you today and the super study and everything else.
Thank you. And the high iron manganese you mentioned, one well was over a thousand percent what the EPA recommended it to be, and then on that same well, the manganese was over four hundred percent over what EPA said.
Well, EPA doesn't have set standards for health concerns on that?
No, it's for staining of clothes and things like that. And staining of pipes, and that's really the biggest concern people have, is staining their toilets, running bathwater, bathboards per hour, washing them in it, and that's really iron in the manganese.
And it can be a seasonal thing as well in the other wells, and the day we took samples, it made us not show them. But I can tell you that in the reports we got, it was the only the one well that did that was hot.
I'm going to go wrong there.
And, you know, a lot of the times, the better move for that is to show that well for a little while and then recharge, and hopefully things will settle out. Maybe look at it a little bit harder, have it evaluated to see if it can be pumped more or pumped less, but the, you know, short of putting a filter on that well, if it's not the most used well, you know, that's a, that's a two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollar expense to go after something that may not fix the underlying problem, which may be in the pipes now and deteriorating.
Great information.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, and I think Commissioner Jeffrey's kind of alluded to the answer. So all of this flushing of these pipes that are older than me, what is the likelihood of that creating a water main break?
Of it creating one?
Of causing one, I guess, yeah.
So, it can, it can happen, but typically what happens when you open a hydrant, you know, the water's going from zero velocity or two, two feet per second to very, very fast, twenty feet per second, it gets scour velocity inside of there. And what you wind up having to do is open that hydrant slowly and then close it slowly. And when I mean open it slowly, I mean, you know, one turn, two turn, and then you close it back very slowly. I've been in towns where there were problems with people opening and closing too fast, and the next thing you know, they close it, water hammer happens because you're stopping a very large force of water really quickly. And what happens is that hammer then regurgitates back and something shakes loose underground, and the next morning, you've got water shooting out of the ground. That can happen. It's, if you, with smart flushing and the smart operations, but sometimes the people turn the wrenches in the hydrants, on the hydrants are getting a little eager, and it's hot, I'm going to turn this faster because I'm ready to go home, ready to eat lunch or something like that. And it happens. But you typically see a, typically see a couple like that whenever you go through the routine flushings, but, you know, you don't see forty of them in a year. You see one or two, and mains, if it's going to break with that hammer, it's going to break with some other water hammer that happens. So the hydrant may just be what made the weak point show up at that. And that's, that's what I would say. Now, you don't want to go through and make a habit of slamming it shut, but you, there's, when there's two thousand gallons of water coming out of a hole, I'm not real sure how to gauge how quickly or slow you really got to go. You just keep turning until it closes off, and sometimes it steams break, and you can't get them closed. So it's a, you know, it's, there's a lot going on when you are flushing hydrants like that. You're trying to make sure there's good water quality, you know, lots of different factors that come into this.
Thank you.
I want to clear up. I'm not against that, but I'm against it when we can't control our system.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I'm against it. And I'm against it when we put that into violation hands to do, because they don't have a clue. And I'm going to sit here and say, John Nelson, I'm sorry, John, I'm just saying this.
We do it once a quarter, and we've had it again.
But that's between you and me, I guess, down the road. But I think it's something that we can look at when we have insertion valves, we need thirteen. When we have insertion valves, when this town can be put into zones, then we can go into that zone and start exercising other valves, like he's talked about. And if we have a problem, then we can shut it down and fix the zone, or we can go in there and do this scouring in that zone. So we have a way to shut that zone down. I'm not against it, I'm against it in the situation where we're right now, we have no, we have no control over shutting our system down. And that's, you know, that's just, that's the valves. These guys have tried, it didn't work, we know it, it's what it is, and that's where I'm against it at this timeframe. And that's why I'll say that.
Mike Tolson, thank you for your time, effort, and energy. We appreciate the reports and the presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely. If you have any questions, y'all, feel free to reach us.
Next item on the agenda under old business is 205 West Main Street. Do you want to just save that for the manager's report? Sure. All right. 205 West Main Street, old business is going to be moved to the manager's report. So next item on the agenda is going to be the chamber update.
I'll be brief tonight, we have a lot, a lot of agenda. Just giving right to some pertinent businesses related to the town and the chamber. The Chamber has been invited to co-host an event this November. For those Southern Ash County residents and locals may have been to the Dan Finch Pottery in, not club. Each November, the second week of November, they host a open house. Dan Finch is a renowned potter, and he has about sixty pottery students that work out of his studio. And they open up the greenhouses and the pottery studios for public tours. public tours on the track, I mean, between, uh, the weekend, between three and eight thousand people, uh, traveling from across state line and across the state to come to this, uh, harvest market. Uh, they have invited us to bring that event to downtown.
Yes.
They want us to host it. Uh, we would co-host it with them, uh, and just basically give an opportunity for the company to be, uh, show our hospitality. So I would ask the board consideration support for earmarking that weekend and use it downtown for a potter's market.
What weekend?
It is the second weekend of November. It's, uh, better Tuesday weekend.
Second weekend of November? Oh, that's the, um, yeah. It's like a long-standing date.
Yes.
Right.
I tried, without calling Mr. Finch, I tried to call and figure out how long this has been going on. I think I found in the early 2000s, uh, this has had quite a long, a long standing tradition. Um, about sixty to eighty vendors, food vendors, of course, uh, wood grass music and folk music. Uh, it's a pretty cool experience and it'd be interesting to bring that out of that environment and bring it downtown. Big pumpkin. It's growing. Our little vine is growing.
It is growing.
A little vine. A little bit about the, the pumpkin vine, uh, it's, you know, less than six feet long right now, but we will let that grow to fill nearly that entire thirty by thirty, uh, space before allowing any blooms to pollinate. And, uh, after pollination, you'll start to see it grow.
Will you allow one move?
Only, well, only one pollination.
Pollination, please.
And what's going on with the till up, all the turf hazard, dirt, everything?
So all the open dirt out there, um, after the crews were able to take out the vegetation and overgrowth that was there and the, the plant borders, uh, they have to able to till that up some. Uh, we had some of the soil tested to see for viability, see if it was actually viable, would grow something decent in it. Uh, soils were not favorable towards turf grass that we had initially planned to cover with turf. Uh, speaking with the gardening club, they had considered, uh, planting wildflowers for this season.
Oh, what?
Wildflowers. Uh, and then I would really love to see it in a mom garden for festival. So I have a, an access-
When are they going to level it, some of this top of the turf hazard?
Um, we can have a crew come out and, and smooth it off. Uh, it is a little fluffy from the whole tilling, but, uh-
Well, there's steep ditches, you know, steep drop-offs where the wood, uh, railroad tiles are. Chris, um, you know, uh, what are they, eight bays? There's, you know, deep, then on one side on Main Street, there's a drop-off, that'll straighten out a lot much.
I'll take a look at that. We may need to bring in some additional soil to fill in some of those gaps.
Do you need a formal vote, Ethan, from the board on, uh, the pottery festival?
I don't know under the current policies and procedures of the town that a vote is necessary, but traditionally we have gotten the-
I'd make a motion that the board and town spring hope support Chamber fully and co-host and Danny Finch of the House second weekend of November and just block that date off by now for that.
Second.
All the favors out?
All right.
Your opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for bringing another great event to town. All right, next item on the agenda, we're going to move back up to section five, new business. And first item under new business is consider action approved of water and tax write-offs.
Okay, so Sandra Morris, the tax collector, has, um, provided some information to you all. The, um, first thing would be the, um, water write-offs. She has exhausted all, um, collections, um, that are available to us, including, um, the, uh, state's debt set-off. And they can only stay on there for three years because of water bills. Um, so the only thing we can do is write these off and then these people try to come back into town, then we can collect from them. But as you see on the, on the opposite side, there's also several people that have, um, passed on and there are no ways to collect when there are no family members left. And then as far as the taxes, um, these are ten years, um, that she can hold on to these. And these all, um, according to the state of North Carolina, after ten years, you have to, um, write them off. And she needs a motion to be able to, um, write these off in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a vote, please?
Um, these were things to pay. What is their rationale behind saying, I'm just not going to pay you? Especially if I did, it was the one thing. So they have been, um, they have been put on debt set-off. But like I said, because, um, after ten years, we can't collect.
Do we have a, a list of accrued total tax debt? So like, if, these are for just the most recent tax year?
Uh-huh.
Um, but what about like the ten years? I know everything ten and over is written off, but what about years nine, seven, six, five, four, three, two?
Yeah, she has all those.
Where the total? Can you make a list where it gives us the total?
Sandra can do it too. She's a tax collector.
Okay. Are any of the ones that we're going to be writing off part of the, the ones that have like ten years worth of back taxes?
No.
Are we, we're keeping all the, the long, like the big accounts, we're keeping them?
Yes, those little ones, yeah.
Okay. It's messy if you do it back, right?
Yes, ma'am.
For clothes, you can pour clothes on for thirty-three dollars if you want. You can lock the clothes on for forty dollars if you want.
I'll restate my motion. I can motion to write these off, water and tax write-offs.
Second.
All the favors out?
Um.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is, you, were you upstairs on Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is consider action to approve discoveries, releases for Nash County and Spring Hope. Well, Michelle, can you tell us about this topic?
Yeah. Um, once again, it's something from Sandra, just she's a tax collector. Um, these are, um, different, like they say, they are discoveries and, and, um, releases. So like if they'll find something new, like they'll see, um, like this right here says twelve hundred sixty-seven dollars is a new tax listing for Nash County. So that's a discovery which we will be taxing. And then, um, these releases are, um, they, um, this one right here is a glitch. And then, um, so that's actually not, um, that's not collectible because it was a, um, error. And, um, then for the, this one right here was released for the postmark. So that means we will be collecting on that.
All right. Any more, Commissioner, like to make a motion?
For item B. The best we approve these, uh, releases and discoveries presented.
You have a second?
Second.
All the favor?
Uh-huh.
Tony, do you have a question?
No, I'm good.
You're sure?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Go ahead.
No, I just, it's just the, never mind. Go, no.
Say it so you know next year when it comes up.
No, no. I just had a hard time believing when, you know, they just don't pay them and enough time goes by.
Well, after ten years.
That they're released from it.
They have a motion on that.
I know it's a statute, but I don't know if you can put that on the air.
All right, you want to oppose that motion that Commissioner just put there? All right.
No.
All right, motion passes. Thank you.
You know, it doesn't normally get to the table.
You, you do have to, yes.
Help with the people playing on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom. Commissioner, here.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, consider an action to renew legal services with Fields and Cooper. So we were presented with this contract about, uh, an hour and ten minutes ago.
It's the same you had before. It's just, it's part of the budget process too, that, uh, I mean, that it'll start at the beginning of the budget year. It's the same, same setup as it was before. A retainer that basically pays for my attendance at the meetings, every twelve, uh, meetings, irregular meetings and plus other, uh, phone calls. Generally it's up to at least four hours a month, uh, that you get from me that I don't charge for that. But any other major, um, work I do, I do on a hourly basis. Uh, my law partner, Ryan King, who I believe, I don't know if he's done much work for Spring Hope. He does all the baby middlesex that we shared, natural, I do most of natural, but we do that. I don't think he's done anything for Spring Hope, but if he did, um, we deal at different rates and you see the rates there. Um, but it's the same rate that we've had. We appreciate the town employing us and, um, I'm glad to answer any questions you have about the contract.
Twenty-eight hundred a year and then, uh, four hours a month at the twenty-eight-
That's a part of it, yeah. The, well, yeah, it, it, it says just incidental calls. Um, there are times that I get, there's some months where I get ten calls a month from the town. There's some months I get zero calls from the town. So, um, it evens itself out, uh, over the year. It hasn't really been, you know, it, but I would say this year it was a little bit more intense from August until Andrew people wore, it wasn't, it wasn't a town manager. So, uh, but that's an anomaly. That's, it's, it's, it generally, that's not it.
Board, this is a short contract. It's only a page and a half. You got to work with, um, with Attorney Edwards for several years now. Um, does anybody want to make a motion? Y'all want to look at it, review it? And it will, it will be independent of the budget. So if you tabled this, you couldn't approve the budget tonight.
I'm making a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Let's go.
All right. All the favors out?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your continued service.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We, we are, we are a planet of service.
That's right. All right, next item on the agenda, consider action signed contract for land development updating with Stewart Inc.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the updated contract from Stewart, uh, as I mentioned to the board at last month's meeting, uh, the requirement to break it out over two fiscal years. You can see, see the scope of service. Stewart is a reliable firm that the county itself is utilizing for their land use land. So, I'm, I'm sorry, twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars over two fiscal years.
That's the total.
Yes, sir.
So I've got a question about task two, uh, and part, in the first part of task three, which are the work sessions that Stewart is going to do with the town staff. Uh, most of this is just routine one sixty, the updates where we're bringing our municipal standard up to state standards. But a lot of this is going to have to do with updates that will physically shape what Spring Hope looks like ten years from now. And a lot of it will have to do with how Spring Hope operates, the policy administration. Um, so these updates that Stewart Inc. is doing ten years from now, they will precisely say how Spring Hope operates and what it looks like.
Cool.
And it says that these work sessions are with staff only, but I feel that it's, and then you guys will bring it back to us, but I feel, uh, that something this important that will probably not happen again for a decade, two decades, something that's never happened in Spring Hope on a mass scale is never. I feel that it's important that the commissioners actually sit in at least one of these work sessions where they can listen and ask questions unfiltered from the town staff directly to, in front of them.
Uh, the, the reason why some of the background work is with town staff, Mr. Mayor, is to keep the cost down.
It's about five different work sessions that they're going to do, uh, throughout the period of the contract. So if one of those work sessions included the commissioner-
Sure. There, there certainly is the opportunity to have more work sessions with the commissioners, the public or whomever you want. There's a cost associated with that.
I'm not saying out of, I'm saying one that's already going to be scheduled and we're already paying for it with staff. Because we're taking, we're taking somebody that is not from here and never lived here, doesn't, I know some people may say similar about me, but these are the elected commissioners. So you're putting the filter on that. And this is something that's never been done before in Spring Hope.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that. I'm just telling you, I would have to go back to the contractor and ask them what that would cost because they are assuming it's with Tom's staff.
Mm-hmm.
If it's with the board, I'm fine with that. There's a cost associated. Anytime they're working with a board, whether it's board of commissioners, planning board of the public, there are additional costs associated with it because there's a lot more preparatory time. So I'd be more than happy to go back and ask them to include some more time with the board, if that's what you want, if that's what the board wants.
Mm-hmm.
But it's going to cost, change the cost of the contract.
On, uh, on that same contract, uh, item nine point oh one contradicts eight point oh one and five point oh one A and B, but what they're talking about is liability, hold harmless liability. Um, in the contract, it says that if the contract is under twenty-five thousand, which ours is, ours is for twenty-two, uh, that the liability is twenty-five thousand. If contract's twenty-five thousand and one dollars, then the liability is two hundred fifty thousand. There's a lot of language that says hold harmless, um, indemnification, but then it talks about liability in bold, in bold letters in the contract. The only thing in bold has had a size liability. So what is an example of when there will be a liability to the town that we would need their policy to pay?
Uh, I'm not sure. I think that's a question for legal counsel.
Well, I mean, if, if, uh, the town administered its, its only ordinances improperly are pursued by somebody that had a vested interest, and I guess if the reason the town administered it properly was because the statutes that were updated by Stewart were updated incorrectly, then we could possibly sue them since we're hiring them to do this. Because this is, you know, this is not a, this is not something that needs to be done routinely. This is something that's being done because the legislature changed the general statutes in Raleigh that govern chapter one sixty D that governs how towns, I mean, I'll take one step back. Towns can only do, uh, can take action only if they're authorized by the state, um, whether it's police work, zoning, or any other aspect of the town. So when it comes to zoning, the town can only zone under rules that meet the state requirements. And the state made, did a major overhaul of what towns can do. And in doing that major overhaul, they changed all the statutory references as well as some substantive matters about what towns can and cannot do. And so what we're doing here is bringing the Spring Hope ordinances into compliance with the state law. This is not a routine thing that's done year by year or ten year by ten year. This is kind of a one-time thing to come into compliance with a one-time change in Raleigh is what this is.
So we, uh, we can pass this and we can make a motion to accept it, uh, as written. My recommendation is that we at least have one work session where the board meets directly with them. Uh, but that's their decision. So I've brought it before them. Uh, so at this point, that it can be tabled, it can be a motion approved as written. Uh, it can be tabled with, uh, you know, pending, we'll see if, uh, what it would cost to include that meeting with the board. So this, you guys' decision, if you feel like this, this attorney said it's not something routinely happened. I don't know that this type of update has ever happened in Spring Hope and I don't know that it'll happen again in any of our lifetimes. Um, so this, and it shapes what Spring Hope looks like and how it operates. So you guys are the ones that vote. So you guys need to decide if you feel like it's important you met with the-
Mark.
No, we're not, no, I'm not.
Let me clarify this, if I understand correctly.
Yes.
The town has a set of ordinances, town ordinances pertaining to all this stuff that have been established for quite some time. And it's all thick, look, correct?
Yes.
And the ordinances, they're ordinances that this town governs all this stuff by. We've got it in place, we've had it in place for quite some time. The only thing Stewart is doing is going through our existing ordinances that we already have and making sure that they comply with the new state regulations. So we're not really changing anything. We're just making sure we, what we already have comply with what the state requires.
If I may address that.
And so once they do that, then the town staff will present to us, be those of them. Right, Andrew?
Um, well, Commissioner Griffin, yes and no. That is in part what they're doing. Um, they are updating our regulations to be compliant with state statutes. The other part they're doing is adding anything that the town would desire in terms of things that, um, that state law will allow, but aren't necessarily a requisite of having functional land development regulations. For example, appearance standards or other types of land development regulations that the town would like to see future developers, uh, put into their, uh, land development projects. So there is some value added.
So you really can-
Right. So some of it is contextual, as the mayor has moved into.
Okay.
Then that's a concern for me then. If there's going to be some changes because we the ones always on Facebook, we made changes that, uh, wasn't due for the town. And if they're going to make these changes, we're not knowing involved.
Um, well, no, it, it, there is, there aren't, uh, there are- Well, no, there is, there aren't, there are only two direct meetings between the consultant and this board and the planning board. So if we want more direct interaction between the contractor, consultant, and the boards, whether it's this board or the planning board, that's just a matter of discussing the cost. There's not, there's no, there's nothing untoward going here. It's just a cost-saving measure. But whatever they decide, or you and they decide to put in the ordinance, that ultimately has to come before this board. None of it will be done without the board's decision.
Thank you. That clarified it for me. It's fine to do it.
Will these tasks be going on simultaneously? Or will this task be done and then they go to Task Two and then they go to Task?
Most of that is lenient, so they'll...
This is lenient. So when we sign this contract, thirty days, they should be bringing this, or they should have this task number one.
Completely. That's what it says.
Now, when they get a task done, would that, could that be brought before the board, that task?
It requires action, the action board.
But for us to look at it and while they're, so we're not brought, we're not, it doesn't come to us in a book like this all at once. We can look at this thing as they go down through here.
I think that, more or less, that's the plan, I'm sure, Jeffries.
So in that lane, then we are going to be able to look over all the recommendations prior to approving anything to Stewart?
It'll be incumbent on Tom Staff to bring it to you. But there's a limited interaction between the consultant and the board, I guess.
And I'm going to say something, Kyle. And I apologize to town citizens now for me to sit into that meeting is wasting air. I'm just, because it's technical and it's going to be in a situation to a degree that I probably won't be able to grasp anyway, I'm just being honest and being frank about it. And so it's not something that I feel I need to do. And I'm just, because it will be beyond, now, can I get it yet? But we don't probably have enough money to get it through my head, this whole process.
Well, I would beg to...
I'm going to lean on, here's my thing, I'm going to lean on, I'm going to lean on Andrew. We've hired him for this position. We've put him in this position because we feel he's qualified. And he's said more big words tonight than I can even answer what they mean. And I just feel that we've put him in this position and I feel we should trust him and our other ladies in that, that when they bring it to us, they can explain it to us so that possibly I can understand it. And that then we can vote on each section as it comes.
I'm good with it since I've seen y'all. Nothing would change for y'all. I'm good with it.
Task Five, Andrew.
Yes, sir.
Development impact fee recommendations. That's something that'll happen at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, so that'll be towards the end of twenty-four. This is probably one of the most imminent, important ones. You've been doing a great job pulling off development impact fee recommend, or this task with Tom White, upgrading some of the meters and different things. So you've been, you've been a great steward before that. My question is, another subdivision comes before the planning board and the board of commissioners before the twenty-two thousand twenty-four, where we have these recommendations. Would Stewart be willing to step in and say, hey, this developer would probably pay for this, 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 and this? You see what I'm saying? So we don't miss out?
Yes, sir. And that would be really depend, if we don't have the regulations on the books, it's really the goodwill of the developer that we're, or some type of working out a mutually agreeable situation with the developer, which is what we did with Tom White to be able to have that. So without the ordinances, we can't compel a developer to do it. So that is a vitally important task because potentially that would then a lot of direct revenue to the town, particularly with Bryson's Ridge. So the fact of the matter is that, you know, it would make sense to move that up in the process.
Can?
I can go back to Stewart and with the board's request for more face time and see what that price will be. And we can have that as an add alternate item for the board to consider. And I can also ask them to move up the development impact fee recommendations if that's the board's desire.
Yeah. So if you did a table, would you just ask you to do that and bring it back next month?
I would say you'd have to take a vote to table it to bring it back.
This is not part of our, this number is not part of our current budget vote?
No.
It actually is part of the current budget. Yes, general fund.
Well, Andrew, on the task four, the deliverables and meetings, it has one joint work session with planning board and board of commissioners, or one planning board meeting and one board of commissions meeting.
Yeah, and that's, I guess, what I was alluding to, Commissioner, because there is one scheduled meeting for each board. It's just if the board wants more face time with the consultant, there would be a cost associated with it. So that's imperative for the board.
I feel like this is part of the budget, right?
Yes, ma'am.
If I'm going out, I'm going to make a motion to accept it as written. Second. Will you make a motion?
I'm leaving.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The agreement with Stewart is approved as written.
I can ask Stewart to move up the development fees and their tasks.
Next item on the agenda is going to be, consider action, consider contract for tank maintenance with Southern Corrosion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I have provided previously condition reports and photographs of the state of the water tanks. This was brought to my attention by Commissioner Jeffries, and I thank him for that because water tanks are not something we often think of. In doing our due diligence, both with the current service provider and with Southern Corrosion, it's clear that Southern Corrosion, who, by the way, does just about every other tank in Nash County is the preferred vendor, the price difference between the existing contract and the proposed is minuscule, really. In meeting with Southern Corrosion, they also provided a lot of technical assistance on potential vendors to make some of the system improvements we've been talking about in restoring the automation and replacing the altitude valves and all the things that we need to do to get the system current and operational as well as potential SCADA systems in the not too distant future. So that's why I recommend Southern Corrosion to the board.
Just curious. Their response times specified, is that somewhere in your time?
Yeah, I believe it was within twenty-four hours. That they would have somebody visit the site?
Because they're coming out of Roma Brad. So that's not a...
I think it was within twenty-four hours.
Okay. I just wanted to see it. I couldn't find it. All right. I see the specify, that's what I mean. I see the specify that I expected, but I don't see the twenty-four hours. And it may be in here. But if it's not, everyone wants to see something written about that to where we have it. I'm sure it is.
I recall seeing twenty-four hours.
Well, it was, and Jim probably told you that maybe, and that's fine.
I don't think he mentioned that.
I trust in this guy, but we'll talk to him.
Trust, but verify.
Yes, please.
So they don't have the repainting of the interior of any of our tanks scheduled until year six, which is twenty-twenty-seven. The tank over at the school, you remember the pictures? It's rust, it's peeling. All the rivets, the tank's peeling, they're rusted. All the joints are rusted. The support bars are rusted. And they're not doing that until year six. So no matter how much they clean it, it's still going to be a bunch of exposed rust that's growing. So should the repainting of that, the other one doesn't look that bad, but they have the other one repainting at year eleven. The Morgan Street is repainted at year eleven, on the interior.
And that's what contributes rust and water.
Right. And it does. And that's one of the reasons for seeking out a new vendor. While it's a complete repainting that they're discussing in year six, in the interim, they still do the visual inspection. They still make necessary repairs and will cover the more egregious issues that are identified in that visual inspection. So what that is, is just a complete draining of the tank and a complete repainting of the interior.
Oh, in year six?
Yes, sir.
So what about the next five years? Oh, it's got rust driven off of the rivets and the seams and the...
Those are, that is part of the maintenance contract to deal with the egregious examples of that. So they would clean and inspect and repair those areas.
Can we, can we request that at the end of the first year or whenever they complete their year-one items of cleaning and touching up maintenance, as you said, that they actually provide us pictures that show that those rivets and the joints and all the other rusted stuff that has actually no paint on it right now has been sanded or whatever they need to do to it?
Those are part of the, they are to provide us an annual report as part of their maintenance contract.
Okay.
And unfortunately, we have been getting those from the current vendor, but the images are so low resolution, you actually have no idea what you're paying for. And it wasn't until we actually got actual images of the inside of the tank that we were able to discover exactly what kind of state those tanks are in.
So that is for sure something to take care of the first year?
I can check. You know, I can go back and...
Because that's like rust touching the water.
Yes, sir. I understand. That's why this is a priority.
Can you ask Jim, I know it's year six, when they go to repaint the interior of a tank, how many days down is that tank sitting there? Because we understand what our pump systems can pump, our wells can pump. And I'm just curious, how long does that guy get down? How long does it gotta sit for the paint to dry, clean, dry? That whole process will be...
Clearing process, yeah.
How long does it take?
All right. So this item, consider contract for tank maintenance, Southern Corrosion. We've had a few concerns and questions come up by commissioners that I think the town manager's going to get answers to.
So specifically, annual reports, the interior repairs and what they consist of, and how many days is a tank down for?
When they do the major...
Major and emergency response.
No, we got that. Yeah, they showed it.
So we can make a motion to accept it as written? Or we can get the answers to the questions first and then table it or not?
I think we need to make, I make a motion that we accept this contract from Southern Corrosions for maintenance for our tanks.
All right. We got a motion on the floor. Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider new water and sewer rates. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I have discussed with the board at several previous board meetings and during budget hearing, the rate structure is a critical component to the health of the enterprise fund. And it was my sense particularly that the rates had not been increased dramatically for the better part of over a decade, that we had some systemic issues there. So we actually utilized North Carolina Rural Water Association, which we pay an annual membership fee to to conduct that grid study. And it was conducted by at least two people, actually three people considered Dwight, the wastewater side. So the rates that you have before you, the rate schedules, there are actually two versions. One does not provide for capital improvement fund in year two and the other does, is one large increase this year and then incremental increases across the next four fiscal years. The, and alternative two is a large increase this year, a smaller increase next year that would be used to apply to a capital improvement fund and then smaller increases over years three through five. I can say that in conducting this rate study, the Rural Water Association took into consideration our current year budget and discovered that even if we stayed with the status quo, our enterprise fund would be insolvent this coming fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three. We're actually down to the wire this fiscal year. We will make it, God willing. If no emergencies happen, but we have all but exhausted the enterprise fund this year. So this is a very necessary rate increase. And I know that it's shocking to the system, but that's because rates have not increased for a long time. And we are kind of making up for lost time in leaps and bounds. So that's why I bring this to the board for their consideration.
I mean, I do agree that it needs to be an increase, but when I'm looking at the detail down here, from seventeen to twenty-nine, that's a twelve dollar increase for people. That's probably eight dollars a gallon by that time. Then you got number two, that's a ten dollar increase for these citizens. It's just a big amount to, I know it wouldn't be for me, a big amount to take my, put up about twelve dollars. I can't speak for, you know, all citizens, but it's a big jump.
Is the seventy-two percent increase just on the base rate or also on all the gallons above the base rate?
The percentages are not much.
The percentages are only...
Five percent, five and a half percent.
So the seventeen, the seventy-two percent is on the base rate, which includes your first three thousand gallons.
And then the three thousand one up is five and five percent?
Per thousand gallons.
Per thousand gallons increase, okay.
So you said we have one and two as those are our... One, two, and then you got your sewer, the sewer.
Mr. Mayor, if you need the hard copies here.
And then you got this.
There you go.
Now that's where I saw that seventy-two percent.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something. This rate hike, it has to happen. There has to be a rate hike, just like Ms. Wilkins said. It's a no-brainer. It has to happen. I feel that I'd like to be able to dive into this more with Andrew, Michelle, and the board. I know we only got two weeks, three weeks. I understand that. But I think this is such an important step, and I know we mentioned other important steps that we're getting ready to do for the town. But I really feel that we need to look at this thing hard and heavy. And we need to look at what was sent to North Carolina Rural Water to come up with these numbers. I really like to see it and read it and look at it. I feel very troubled to attach a seventy-two percent rate increase to those older citizens that are on a fixed income. And I know that's life, I guess, but I still have a hard time. If this would have happened three or four years ago, when our economy wasn't quite as bad, we were still, I would still probably bark about it. But right now, everything is going up. And to hit those citizens, and these are the ones that, or my mom's, and you guys aren't going to believe this, I have a hard, I had to go back and look. My mom used ten gallons of water last month. I've got another lady in a rental house that used four hundred and ten gallons of water last month. I've got another rental house that used over a thousand gallons. They were just over a thousand. And I just have a hard time hitting those folks that do not use that amount of water with a twelve dollar hit. And I may be wrong in that thought process. I understand Andrew and Michelle. And I trust the North Carolina Rural Water Authority a hundred percent. I've had many conversations with Dwight. But I really would love to see us have a time where we can sit down again and dig into this little war. and dig into this little war, dig into the budget that was presented to them, and see if there's something that can't be done before we just say yes. I'll have a hard time saying yes. Let me say that at this moment.
Make a motion to table it.
Well, let me see what the others... I mean, I...
Another reason for taping it is we are short on commissioners now. It's a big decision to make without commissioners here, and you've got some concerns. So if you want to make a move, I'll tell you this. I'm also, I probably would have to reassess this meeting and do the...
And I want to say this. I want to say this. This is not me saying that what Andrew and Michelle and Look is done is wrong. This is me wanting to lay my eyes on it and to look at it and scour even more and to see if there's something that can be done a little better. I'm just... And, and I may be, it may be presented at that time, but it's what it is, and that so be it. But I just feel I like to, and I don't know when this can be done. I'm, I'm imposing on the other commissioners now because we're going to have to get together in another two weeks. But I, I really feel that for the town and for the citizens, it should be our due diligence to dig into this thing and look at it as hard as we can look at it and try to figure out what is the best avenue. And this may be it. I'm not saying it's not.
I ask a question. I would be told, um, no question is a done question, okay? Um, not only for me, but also for the citizens. Where did this money go? How is this money spent? What is it spent toward?
Well, the, the budget that we utili... We utilized to put together this rate structure presupposes a town-operated utility.
Have included those, um, water lines?
No, ma'am. What it includes is actually having town personnel and an action plan to, you know, have town employees perform all the repairs, all the maintenance, all the operation. One of the things that Commissioner Jeffries talked about was ten, somebody using ten gallons, and I don't want him to speak as to who was. I have a hard time believing that anybody only used ten gallons.
That's my mom.
I, I, I'm not saying that she's lying about it or that her bill is... I just wonder what that meter reading looks like.
Don't touch that meter. I'm using our body defense, not your defense. Don't touch that meter. No, you, if you didn't...
This is basically for us to operate on our own, right?
Yes, sir.
That's our main scale. Y'all just go with it.
What was that? I'm sorry, Commissioner Lucas.
This is basically for us to start operating on our own, okay?
Yes.
This increase, okay? Y'all follow me? Y'all know that, you see? That's our exit. Okay, so...
Yeah, I think it's also a good point for, to make sure citizens that are here are aware. Water and sewer is like a business for the town. They have to run it in the, in the black. And we've not increased rates for at least ten years because of these kind of concerns. Well, and that's part of the reason we're here, where we are. And so, you know, it is done this way to show us to our own system. And so, we didn't have emergencies, that we've got some money.
I'm sorry, that's a problem if you want to...
Did you send that money? Was you sending it loose?
Yes.
That was your... You should actually bear that in mind.
All right, so we can make a motion to table it?
I...
We make a motion, they vote.
Now, can I just say, like, the only other thing is that if we continue, as we're now with the lower rates, we will not make it next year.
Right.
I mean, we won't make it. We're not... I don't, I'm struggling to make it now. We're going to have zero money left. That means we're going to be in the red, which is the state of North Carolina, a red flag. And once they come in, your decisions will mean the same. They will make all the decisions.
I, I would say it's important to emphasize that people have to understand, one way or another, rates need to go up. I agree with that.
So if we make the decision, then we're making the decision. But potentially, if the state come in, they may take it up further than this.
Right.
Or even if you go with the county, you're looking at a hundred dollars each person, easy.
Yeah, the, the count... You're basically, for the town to keep its autonomy, we have to make the enterprise fund, which, as Commissioner Griffin, Griffin has said, is, is a business fund. That's the way it shows in the audit. I know we had a lot of discussion a couple meetings ago about the audit. It's a business fund. It needs to generate revenues. It needs to cover its costs. And right now, it's not covering its costs.
And when did this take into effect?
It would become effective July first.
And I don't want you to think I'm just painting it like that it's not actual. This is real. This is the real deal. I mean, we're in trouble. I can say...
We noticed that the enterprise fund operated in the negative during the audit, didn't you?
Yes.
I mean, there was money that had to be...
But that isn't...
No, it didn't move any money.
No, that's an accounting... That is an accounting principle. So the depreciation counts against you. So in that sense, it shows as a loss, but we weren't not, we were not operating in the red. No. This, and this budget actually capitalizes that depreciation. So we actually have a small capital fund that will, uh, that it will no longer come against us.
And just so you... Ms. Wilkins, it's not just twelve dollars. The time we add it all together, it is fifteen seventy-one.
I think for the, and according to North Carolina Rural Water, for the average user, it's approximately seventeen dollars a month.
So, I mean, I've been working here for almost like fifteen years, they've gone up fifty cents. We can't do that anymore.
All right.
We are not, we can't absorb any more.
Well, I would, I would also add that you heard Mike Tolson talk about the state of the water system. You have previously heard him talk about the state of our wastewater system, where we have lift stations that don't have redundancy, which means two pumps. Uh, where we have lift stations that don't have generators. I think we only have one that has a generator, maybe two. These are all system improvements that people want to make, and we can make them. But there has to be a commitment to pay for those things. And this year, Michelle and I have been robbing Peter to pay Paul to install pumps and make system improvements. We can't continue to operate like that. There's just not...
Paul broke down. Yeah, Paul broke.
Peter's looking at Stuart Row.
Can I just ask one question? If, if we're going to be doing this ourselves, and I'm not opposing the increase at all, but if we're going to be doing this ourselves, does that give us some money back from EnviroLink? That they do it now? I mean, will some of that money come back into this fund?
We're heading into a public hearing, so let's hold it for that. That's one agenda item. It'll be a public hearing. We can open up those.
I, I know there's got to be a tax lift. I know. Don't make no mistake about it.
No, no tax thing.
Well...
Let's do it in water. Let's get a motion to table or something.
Well, and I just understand that. Mike, I, if it was me, I'd like to make a motion to the table. We come together when, when...
We have a motion.
Chris McCollum is with us.
On the floor to table this agenda item and the rate raise. Do we have a second?
Until, until the end.
Well, we only got till the end of this month.
I'm saying do it in the motion. I'm saying do the motion.
I would only say that.
That needs to be in the motion.
What's that?
The date.
Oh, the date, yes.
The date needs to be in the motion.
Well, that's our manager's got something he's...
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. There's no sense of talking about the budget without this rate increase because that totally changes the...
The whole entire budget.
So I mean, for all, for all intents and purposes, there can be no discussion about the budget.
So, I mean, it's, it's a tough, um...
Hold on.
It's a tough...
Time. So you're telling me that we can't talk about this then?
Well, you can, but you can't adopt it.
I understand that. But can this be changed? Because I see numbers of your... I don't feel that we're correct.
Uh, that, I'm not saying you can't have discussion, Commissioner Jeffries. Don't misunderstand. What I'm saying is that, that you can't adopt the budget.
I understand that. And I'm not saying we... I'm saying we wait and not adopt it at this second. We wait whether we can set something up in, in two weeks or whatever that timeframe is to sit down with all of us and discuss this more and to see if that number can... I just, I have a hard time with hitting people.
Tony, we can call the special call meeting after it's been reviewed to vote on it.
My only concern about tabling it is if we table it, I want to make sure we table it at that time. We have time enough to get everything done for the budget and not put you guys in any overpinch and not worry about the possibility of the state taking our budget off.
Waiting another two weeks is gonna hurt because we have to do another public hearing. We do have end of the month and end of the fiscal year on business, and I'll have to do a lot of amendments. It's, it's gonna be, you know, hard.
So what date? Well, she got published for a public hearing.
Did she talk about the budget?
What's the latest, thirteen?
Yeah, we're going to the word.
Let's just have the, the budget hearing anyway, Michelle.
Okay. In that way, we'll have to... We have to...
So what, what's the latest date that we're, that we're saying? You said you got published for a public hearing.
Okay, well, now if we go ahead and have a public hearing tonight, like, um, just ask questions and stuff, because, let's see, um, what's today, the sixth? We need to have that as soon as we can possibly put it together. We're on the twentieth. That's the latest, June. The twentieth is holiday. It's June 10th. We don't, we don't... Oh, you guys don't recognize the fact that, sorry.
I'm not here though.
Well, see, that's another thing. It's a, she's not going to hear. I mean, the whole point of having a forum though, you know...
Well, I'm, I'm kind of, I, I, you know, you table a lot of things, but most of the time, when I do this and I think about it, I already know what I want. I'm just that kind of a person.
Now that you got to have it explained more to me. I understand that this is something that needs to happen before the state comes in, and I would rather us do it than the state come in.
And I wasn't trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to tell you with the facts, this matter of... The LGC is in charge. Whatever they say goes. And if they come in and say, look, Michelle, we're taking everything, then that's it. Y'all have no power, and even as elected officials, they can do whatever they want. And that's scary, and it's happened to other towns. Now, I mean, if we can't do it on the twentieth, the two, uh, week on the twenty-seventh is down for the, for us. We can't do it here. In fact, our computers will be down pretty much because we have to switch over to the new...
We're voting on the budget until the July meeting?
No, we have to vote. We have to by the thirty.
It's being placed by the end of the month.
By the end of June. We have to have...
So how comfortable do you guys feel with, with this? Because we have the state to come in. And then we're not willing to put it out, we're not going to be upset.
Now, we had a motion to table it. There was no second, so that motion dies. So now the board can make a new motion to accept it as written or can adjust his motion to table it with some other contingent circumstances. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept it or table it with maybe, as Commissioner Lucas said, you table it with a special call meeting scheduled for next week? That's an option that could happen.
She's ready.
We can make a motion.
I make a motion to accept it as written.
Which one? The first option alternative or the second?
First option.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
One nay, uh, three ayes, motion carries. So the rate increase has been adopted. It's about seventeen dollars a month.
No.
Try again. All right. Next item on the agenda is Consider New Rate for Garbage Collection with GFL. And I am really excited about this one because we get a full-size recycling bin.
You know, we did every year, at least people come back from the...
Oh, yeah, they just, they just increased it last year. At least they're giving us something this year, a two-dollar a month permit. We get a, a full-size recycling bin instead of that little thing, right? I was going through what I throw away and, you know, the milk jug, the soda cans, the Pepsi bottle, the car, pizza cardboard box. Most of it is recyclable stuff anyway.
So, Mr. Mayor, with the two-dollar a month collection fee increase, yes, that would provide for the sixty-five gallon toters courtesy of GFL. And that will help, I know trash around town is one of your things, and that should help with the trash flow around as a result of the recycling. But at the very least, we need a one-dollar increase to cover the increased costs. Obviously, we all know, Commissioner Jeffries talked about inflation. It's a, the contract is going up, and we have to cover those costs.
Probably gonna stop dropping trash in my, um, in my, in the little window in my deep place that my husband had to go out there and pick them up.
That's something we have had a conversation with the supervisor about the constant compaction to minimize trash flowing out of the back of the trunk. So we'll, we'll raise it with them again.
That's a good point.
Now, last time the town was doing their, their system, we went back to the rest.
That's right. That's right. They're covered in you. And you can be effin', you can be... That around the...
Right, but the town's been absorbing it every single year.
That's right.
We have not passed it along.
All right, so item G, Consider New Rate for Garbage Collection with GFL. Can we get a motion to accept this new rate change? Or we can get a motion to table? Other questions before we make a motion?
Other comments? We also need the dollar increase, either one or two dollars.
Also needs a two dollars.
One or two dollars.
Two dollars.
Seventeen dollars to say two dollars.
Versus the one dollar for the state acting with me?
And then the two dollars would give us the full size again.
Two dollars would give you the big roller, roller.
And we all get that, right? Then just our Michael goes on to... Two dollar increase across...
Which is ten dollars.
And then literally that to everybody.
Right, for people who pay for... Right, for people who pay individually, it's an extra ten dollars.
I'm gonna say one. You decide, you say one.
Now, for people who, if you want a second bin, like a second trash bin or another recycling bin, then you still pay the extra ten dollars, but just so we're clear. Right, Kendra?
All right, Commissioners. So do we have anybody that would like to make a motion regarding this new rate for garbage collection?
I made a motion to approve a two dollar increase and get the new rollaway bins.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we need to open to a public session, public hearing session. So we'll need a motion to move into, yes, sir. You were about to say something?
No, I hope, just waiting for it.
Make a motion to go to public hearing, discuss the budget.
Second? Any second?
Yes.
All in favor? All right, we are now in open session. And we're gonna let you talk about this budget. You and Michelle, have a...
You want to start, Michelle? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to highlight some of the general fund issue, um, general fund highlights for the board. There is a three percent across the board COLA for all town staff to be accepted. We received a twenty percent increase in medical insurance premiums for town staff. This budget absorbs that entire cost and passes none of that along to town employees. We allocated extra funds to legal for tax foreclosures. I know we, the board has talked about that and how important it is. So we've allocated some extra funds for those legal services because they do require legal services. The monthly trash increase to fund the, the new toters and the, the, to continue service with GFL. All of that is in the general fund. One of the things I want to talk about, the board emphasized to me right from my, from the start of my tenure here, the, making the four thousand dollar increase that you all approved from the ARPA funds for premium paid permanent. So we did explore that. We explored, Michelle and I explored many different ways to try and fund that. The only way to fund it in general fund is for tax increase. When we looked at what that, because you have to remember, it's not just the four thousand dollars. It's increased FICA, increased Medicare, and increased pension obligation for the town. And our current pension obligation for police, I believe it's twelve, it's going to thirteen percent. So that, that comes out of the town's general fund as well. So taking that all into consideration, the entire compensation package for the general, general fund, within eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars... about $818,000, which would have required our rate to go from 67 cents to a dollar five. That's just to fund the increase. So that's untenable, and that's why we did recommend that to the board.
That would be the highest in the state of all jobs.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Uh, so, you were saying that to go from our tax increase rate, which is $580,000, which is what we collect, so I took that and did the math, 67 per 100, that's about $80 million in real estate that we're taxing.
71, actually.
71, okay, so less, so 71 million. Now, on the budget line regarding the salaries, the increase, including fire drills and all that stuff, whatever, was around $100,000 just to do the $4,000 increase across the board. It was around $100,000 on that line item for salaries, is what it was gonna take. So, when I did the math, 32 per 100, which was an increase you said needed to happen to cover the $100,000, actually came to over a quarter million. And I came up with a 12 cent per 100 to actually cover the $100,000 that was needed to make the raises. So, the tax, uh, the needed tax increase is substantially lower than what it was portrayed, or what it was calculated in the documents that we were given. And then, and I'm not saying that we need to increase taxes, but just looking at that, $150,000 house, to be able to give these raises, $150,000 house would equate to, 12 cents per 100 would equate to about $180 increase per year for that resident on a $150,000 tax paid house. So that's, that's about what it would impact, it would affect residents. So, I looked up what you guys said about local tax rates, and we are already up there. I think the highest around us is maybe 71 cents per 100, and, so we're already extremely high. To cover it, it would go from 67 to 79 cents, which would be the highest in, in eastern account, excluding the coastal towns. So, and, as you stated, next year's the evaluation year, so...
It's actually 2024.
2024. Um, I think that, I think that...
One thing, if I may point out, Mayor, next year, we will have additional residents from Walmart Cove.
Okay.
And so, we will have additional valuation there to help fund, at least a partial increase. Then, the following year, if perhaps Bryson's Ridge gets built on schedule and on time, we would have additional. So we are not just relying on increasing taxes, but we're actually increasing the, the tax base.
Well, also, we...
Then you throw in the tax valuation in 2024. So there's more of an opportunity to grow the general fund in the next couple of years, and that can be the, and that can fund increases. And what I would recommend to the board, as opposed to a $4,000 across-the-board increase, would be conducting an independent, third-party management study that can come in, set up a classification system for us, and a merit-based system, so that increases can be more fairly allocated, so that we can be paying people what their, what their fair market value is. So I think, my proposal would be to be more structured about it, that's all, and, and to wait to, to the point where the town's finances don't have to rely on a tax increase. And I don't, I'm not gonna quibble with you about the increase. I heard from the board that you didn't want to increase taxes. I came to you, and we just had a very extended discussion about the water and sewer rates, and not harming the, the end users. So, I didn't think that doing all of these things, we just talked about the, the trash increase in trash fees, hauling fees, so I didn't want to come to the board with a tax increase, too. And that's why we did what we could, including moving a full, a full-time employee from the general fund into the enterprise fund to help fund the 3% COLAs. And I know 3% today is not a lot. Believe me, I know. I go to the pumps, I go to the gas station, I have bills due.
But my concern is, what are we gonna do? We don't have a police officer at all.
Have what?
We have no police officers here. What are we gonna do then? Because we're not able to really give them anything. So I guess, what's going in, if I'm always...
Well, the 3% COLA, that's a good question, Commissioner Luca. Is a 3% COLA is a stock gap measure. It's not just police officers, you can say that about, you can say that about the ladies who work in the office. You can say that about DPW employees that we're hiring. We're hiring them at the top of the anticipated range, and we're still having a hard time attracting people. So, you can say that about anything. At the end of the day, people want to work for Spring Hope, you know, and that, that, you're, you're also, it's not just the compensation. Employers often talk about, it's not just the money. It's the quality of the employer, it's the benefits, it's just, you know, the work environment, and so, all of those things, I can't keep anybody from leaving, nor can you. And there's no guarantee that even with a $4,000 increase, people won't leave, because frankly, that's still, I think, Chief would tell you, that's still below market value in terms of some, well, places like, we can compete with the Rocky Mountains and most of them. We never will be able to compete with them. We just don't have 50,000 people to spread out the costs.
Right, so the cost is only gonna be spread to the people who are actually property owners. Because that's when, you know, the raises, the raising taxes will only hit people that are property.
And that's why growth is so important to the town, and to be able to manage growth.
Don't forget, we got 20% increase in insurance, and right now, the town's gracious enough to pay all of it. So the employees don't have to pay any of it. If it gets to the point where, you know, we can't afford it, then we would have to all pay part of it, right now or not. And it was 20%. That is huge. And that was with all the different quotes I got, was maybe within $2, $3.
Or vendor, it was our, half the trash.
I know, I have to request the shit.
And we actually shopped two different alternatives, including the LEED, and the best we came up with is our kind.
I'm just one commissioner, so it's, I just don't agree, but I'm just one commissioner, so it's bad.
Say it, say it, because it might be what others are thinking.
No, I mean, I, I just think it's important, and I understand we don't have the funds, but I just think it's important to, to really pay, you know, people working for, but I understand the position that we're in as well.
How long have you been here, Chief?
I started in 2014.
2014?
14.
14, eight years, and...
Started total, or it's remade?
It's remade.
I've started, it's remade since 2014.
And are you getting paid less than, or equal to the chief before you, if you don't mind?
About $12,000 less.
$12,000? Less?
Yes, sir.
$12,000 less than the chief that was here before you?
Yes, sir.
Have you had a raise since you've been here?
Just cost a little.
Huh?
I think it was a...
Cost a little?
A half percent or 1% cost a little.
Okay.
You got 1%,?
It was a half or 1%, I can't remember.
And I just can't, I can't even fathom working those numbers for a half or 1%. And, and that's why I proposed something like 3% to the board, to make it, you know...
And the last time you were offered a raise, you passed that to the patrol officers to keep them here, or something, I remember, or something like that?
Never been offered a raise. When I became chief, it was, uh, basically, I tried to get them a raise when I became chief, and the town manager here, didn't hear was Jay. And the money wasn't available, so I told them to take $12,000 from me, split it between my bottom four, to bring their starting pay up from 29 to 34. And that's where they've been here since.
This, so this $4,000, this, go ahead.
It's a public hearing, needed a public hearing first.
Oh, yeah, Michelle, I'm sorry. Uh, but this is, um, an interesting budget question, so public hearing, so we're still, I apologize if you guys have any, any other questions.
I still want, you know, where the money from EnviroLink, that does the water meters and things like that, will that go back into that enterprise fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, of course. Yeah, okay. So that will help some?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
So if there's a property tax increase, it'll be on residential and commercial properties?
If there was one, is that the case?
If there is not, we'll be in the right.
However, we don't stay property.
Yes. So you do it for both at the same time? You can't do it for one or the other? Commercial and residential house staff at the same time?
Everybody's gonna be paying the same rate, if it's .67, if it's .70, it's everyone that pays taxes.
Okay.
Good question.
But remember, it's still on the work department, and that's not going up right now. That's why it's gonna have to be such a large increase. So until we have reevaluation, can our property values go up, it's, it's gonna be a large raise. I'm talking about large raises in the tax rate.
You said one of the employees to the general fund was actually being expensed in the enterprise fund?
Two halves. Half of Michelle's and all of Sandra. So, and Sandra currently is half in the general, half in the enterprise. Moved her all to the enterprise, and moved half of Michelle into the enterprise.
Okay. Should we close the open before we continue our discussion?
Correct, if there's no other people who wants to.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So, the property tax values are done when there's, are based off of what the assessment value is. So when are the assessments due to be redone?
2024.
2024.
Yes, ma'am.
So that means that not only will our town taxes probably go up...
Your county taxes.
Our county taxes are gonna go up, too, because everybody's property values are gonna go up.
Right.
But unless we could allow this, that market crash between now and 2024, which it will.
And the sales tax increase for the town, it was reg town sales tax, correct?
State.
Not in county.
Do we have a town sales tax?
We just get a share of the, the state sales taxes.
And with the recession, it's not, we're not gonna get a lot of sales taxes.
There has already been a, Nash County has not participated like some of the larger counties like Wake and Durham and Mecklenburg on the sales taxes, sales tax increase, revenue increases. We haven't benefited quite, proportionally quite as much. And that, we've noticed also, that's precipitously dropping as well.
Every month it's dropping.
If we don't have any more questions or comments from the general public about the budget, we need to close the public hearing and go back in to regular session. Yes, ma'am?
I have a comment, but I don't know if it has to do with the budget, about the water rate increase.
Uh-huh.
Can I talk about that, or?
Sure, that's part of the budget. I didn't discuss the enterprise fund, because we didn't discuss most of the highlights, but...
I mean, common sense tells you that the rate is gonna increase. I understand that everything that's increasing. But we just have such terrible water service that it's like hard to swallow, that we have to pay more for that. And constant low pressure, my water's out, and then it takes two days to get the results back before I can actually use my water from the faucet. Oh, it smells like bleach all the time, so, I mean, if you put it to me saying, "Hey, we're gonna charge you more so we can improve these things," which I haven't really heard that.
That's exactly what that's for, charging more, make some improvements, and get the system back, give the blacks, and we can make improvements.
Right.
So that if we do have a pump failure, or whatever, we've got some reserves to fix and make those repairs.
Well, I guess I, I understand that, but I thought, my comment is maybe to put it out there like that, because I think people are thinking, talking to other people, like, we have terrible water service already, and now they're gonna charge us more for terrible water, water service.
Me and my, my wife and I are split right down the middle. She said, "I'm not paying the increase, you're paying it." I'm not paying the increase, I'm paying the water. I said, "Oh, no, you know, so I'm paying the increase, because in our house, I see the need for it, she does not. She, she says, "Give me clean water, and then I'll pay the extra." And then, from a government budget standpoint, we, we can't get all the money to make all the improvements, we have to operate it.
Oh, I, I understand that.
So, we are split.
I think it needs to be put out there in a different way, like, "Hey, let's get together and improve this," than it is to say, "Hey, we're gonna increase your water."
I think this was trying to, was trying to make that point, too, that by, by doing this rate hike, you know, we'll get it back into town hands, too. So will that be just water, or will that be everything that'll be going back to town?
Highlight on a couple of things that you may have not known, that she was talking about. We're, right now, we do have EnviroLink contracted out. As you're aware, some, a lot of residents are not happy with the service. So what Andrew's doing is creating our own enterprise, our own public works department, we'll have a public works director, we'll have our own trucks. You'll see our trucks riding around instead of EnviroLink. So when someone calls in to make a complaint, in theory, our staff will be there promptly, quickly, taken care of, addressing it, better customer service, making sure that the water experience that residents get from the town is a much better experience. And we didn't feel that we could control it or manage it any better with EnviroLink. And for us to be able to do that, we've got tremendous startup costs, we've got half a million dollars in equipment that we've got to purchase, we've got to do our own payroll, and so there's a lot of expenses to it. But hands down, when we've got four employees that work directly for the manager, and the manager works directly for, for the board, they're gonna, and, and they're gonna see everybody every day, you know? There's gonna be people that live here, they're gonna see you every day. So they're gonna see you at the grocery store, they're not gonna wanna show up, you know, 18 hours after you call in and make a complaint. They're gonna get there quick, because they're gonna bump into you. So the service level is, is gonna be a night and day difference.
So what's the timeline between switching over and getting rid of...
We have hired the public works director, we've hired an employee, a full-time technician, we also have a full-time customer service agent. So, this budget, once we pass this budget with that rate increase, that's gonna help us to afford to purchase the equipment that we need. So, in theory, we should be able to have our own public works department up and running within three to six months after the budget is passed.
So if I could address the timeline a little bit, and I know John's here in the, in the back, John Nelson with EnviroLink, and he's probably feeling uncomfortable, but...
Sorry.
But he's heard a lot worse. But I will discuss, I, I, I really, my hands were tied in a lot of ways in having discussions with EnviroLink, because until the board makes things official, we're just laying the groundwork. But we have started to acquire equipment, we have hired some employees, and we hopefully, potentially, in the next week or so, will be hiring more. The equipment purchases have been difficult. We've been looking at used equipment, we have been looking at new equipment, but the lead time on getting equipment has been, has been difficult. For example, the reason we're having this meeting here tonight is the best, best we can hope for, to get a condenser unit for the air conditioning offices is about five weeks, isn't it? Is about five weeks. And some of the equipment we've been buying, for example, at excavator, they're telling us 10 months, it could be up to 10 months. So in the interim, we have to do different things, like rent equipment, or see if we can find surplus equipment and so on. So, that's part of the challenge. It's not so much getting the department operational, because Bobby actually is a very experienced individual, and he's been really, Bobby Ball is our public works director, very experienced, very seasoned, and a very steady, low-key guy. He's been doing great work, he's been out helping to open hydrants and so on, he's been, actually paid a lot of attention to that milky water issue, and was able to resolve it in a couple of days. He's very seasoned. We need to get him the people and equipment to help him succeed. That's gonna take some time, and I would ask the residents, all the residents, to be patient with that process, that transition process. But barring that, I think the mayor said it best. You know, in terms of customer service and the ability to talk to people who, they may not live right in Spring Hope, but, you know, one of the people we hired, Bobby's from the area, he's from Justice, he lives in Lewisburg. Matt lives up the road towards Mo Meyer, I think he's got a Spring Hope address, even though he lives up in, in that ETJ. So, you know, those people are going to be more responsive to your needs. And we will get a better system, it's gonna take some time. And the improvements sure will take a lot longer, but we'll work on them, and we'll, we'll get there.
So will those still be after our service, if it's an internal?
Yes, ma'am. There's going to be an on-call person, and they will respond, excuse me, they will respond, and obviously, if it's something serious, they'll have to call for backup and get the crew in. So technically, at times, they may all be on-call.
Good questions. Any other questions from the public about the budget right now?
Will we be doing leaf and limb pickup as well as water?
Leaf and limb in the cemeteries, Bobby knows how important those are for the town's people. So, that is something, we're still, one of the thoughts we had around leaf and limb is to start our mulching operation, so that town residents could participate, get free mulch and so on. The one caveat with that is that has to be permitted through the state. And secondly, the one thing that Spring Hope doesn't have is municipality. We don't have a lot of buildings, and we don't have a lot of town-owned land. So we'd have to find a place to kind of get started. But these are the things that we're wrestling with, and once we're fully operational, I think people will be pleasantly surprised at the advantages that a system like that can give us. But we won't be, that won't be overnight. But we won't be, that won't be overnight. And I know leaf and limb has been particularly, and John knows this as well, a particularly sore, sore subject. But we will work to resolve that issue well.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, if there are no other comments from the public, we need a motion to close the public hearing and go back into general session.
So, no.
Stephen.
All right, I'll favor.
Uh.
I'll oppose. So she carries. So the public hearing has been closed and we are back in regular session. Question, Mr. Manager, about the budget. In the enterprise fund, there is something called capital outlay for a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Can you explain that?
That is basically capitalizing the depreciation number, Mr. Mayor, from the audit.
Okay. All right, so help me understand something. So the income side, which we're government, so we're balanced, but income side is.
Revenue.
Revenue, or revenue side is one point three, the six, right? Let's just say one point three to keep numbers simple. And then the expense, the expense side is one point three. So that hundred and nine thousand, how are we actually spending that? If we take in a hundred and nine, I mean, if we take in one point three million in cash and we spend one point three minus the hundred and nine thousand, how is that money actually being spent?
We can utilize that money for any capital expenditure. For example, pumps, a lift station upgrade, generators, any, any type of capital outlay that's associated. It has to be, we could even buy equipment with it, but it has to be associated with the enterprise fund. That's the caveat.
Okay. So we've got fencing and repairs, fifty-two thousand. We've got loan equipment, forty thousand. Pump hydrants, twenty thousand. Mini excavator, ninety thousand. So you were pretty meticulous on labeling out all the big capital expenditures that we're gonna have. And then this also includes the remaining ARPA funds that were not used from twenty and twenty-one, which is a huge chunk in this budget. So my, my question is that hundred and nine thousand, it's essentially a slush fund. It's there, we need it, you can do budget analysis. That's what it's for, right?
It can function as an emergency fund.
So my, my question to you is, can we take that hundred and nine thousand? Can we look at which employees have been here the longest, obviously you was? Because we, right now, we have people that are on the administrative side getting paid out of the enterprise side. So that says that funds can move from one, you know, one ledger to the other, enterprise or general fund?
Now, let me clarify that for you. So part of Michelle's past are associated with the enterprise fund. So I can justify her working in both funds.
Okay.
Sandra as well. Sandra spends a great, she, for all, Sandra Morris, the tax collector, for all intents and purposes, is the customer service representative for the water and sewer fund currently. She has, spends a great deal of time working on the enterprise fund. And that will continue as she trains up Ms. Ashley Edwards, who will be our customer service rep. So she spends a lot of time. You can't justify paying police out of the enterprise fund. They don't do anything for the enterprise fund. So that, no auditor is gonna let that, let that ride, for example. Even a portion of my salary, I could justify to the enterprise fund, but I'm not going to because I spent time, obviously, a lot of time working on the enterprise fund. But you have to be able to justify that.
So that hundred and nine thousand is not set for anything. Throughout the year, it'll get allocated to what it'll actually get spent on.
So for example, Commissioner Jeffries talked about insertion valves. So if, you know, there is a particular need and we don't have a line item in the budget, but we need to do a couple of insertion valves and it's, it's of a high import, there's a repair that needs to be made or something, then we can allocate that, that money back towards something like that. So again, it becomes a capital outlay.
And then, and emails, I've mentioned this several times, but what I don't understand is why you have your capital expenditures, purchasing a truck, which is a one-time thing, putting in eighty-nine thousand feet or whatever of pipe, which is a hundred, once in a hundred years. I've never seen a budget that took the day-to-day operations, which is enterprise fund, is the day-to-day operations plus your one-time capital expenditures. So that three hundred and sixty thousand or whatever it is that's coming from ARPA funds, that's not money that's gonna be in there next year. So what I said in the email, and which makes more fiscal sense, is that whatever revenues are generated from the enterprise fund revenue, that goes towards day-to-day operations and them going around checking meters, replacing a brake or, you know, checking on a tower, whatever they're doing day-to-day. Because at the end of this, this fiscal year, when we look at how the enterprise fund operated, we're not gonna have a clue without you breaking it down for us with, and what is actual day-to-day operations of that department and what is actual capital income that came from grant money and what was spent on one-time capital improvements. They should be separate.
So town budgets function in two ways, as Michelle has said. We have revenues that are generated and we have to account for all revenues, no matter how they're generated, whether it's ARPA funds, which are basically grant funds, or taxes, and even taxes, we break those down, right? We had FADMOR, which are real estate taxes. We have excise taxes. We have sales tax. We have alcohol sales. We have different, we have to itemize all of those things. Similarly, we must itemize every single one of our expenditures to the best of our ability. This is a snapshot in time. We're trying to look forward and it's difficult to do this. I understand that because who knows what our needs are gonna be in six months. But we have to account for pickup trucks. We have to account for mini excavator. We have to account for all of these things and alignment of budget. And this is what it is. So we have to match those revenues and expenditures that way. If there's a particular capital item, for example, debt service on the wastewater treatment plant or a specific project, we identify it as a line item on the expenditure side. That's the way we have to do it. There are times where we may set up a capital budget. Michelle can talk more about this if you want, because it may make more sense for her. But you know, those are rarer occasions, for example, like wastewater treatment plant.
Right, like when we start with that three point seven million, that will be capital fund. That will be going to a capital fund. That'll be a separate fund from the water and sewer fund because that, it has to be.
Who hasn't the three hundred and sixty ARPA that we've already got?
Because that's a one-time thing and.
So it's three point seven.
Okay, but we already had three point seven six. We have to spend that money. And there's certain things we can spend on. We can't spend it on projects. We can spend it on equipment, water and sewer.
Also, another way to understand it is that three point seven million dollars is a reimbursement grant. So we don't get the money upfront. We actually have to apply to the state and that's why they have their procedures. You have to have an engineer, you have to do this. You have to submit a project budget and then you apply for reimbursement and that's why you have to maintain a capital.
You have to do the work first and then we tell, we tell them, oh, this is what we did. We give them the invoice, then they.
And that's why it's important to have a healthy enterprise fund. Because if you can't, if you don't have the cash receipts to pay the contractor and then you get reimbursed, you don't have a problem.
So you have administrative and buildings on the general fund. So there is revenue for the buildings? Where's, where's the buildings, that section, wherever it is, oh, five hundred, whatever it is, that section buildings on the budget? Where does that revenue come from? There's building revenue? You have administrative and then you have buildings?
And some taxes.
Under expenses. So is there a buildings revenue?
And some taxes.
No, it's not that the line items match up. It's that your costs have to match up.
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm saying is you have administrative, you have operations of the town and then you have buildings, which is capital, right? Well, under the water and sewer, you're mixing that all together. You have it separated in the general fund, but in the enterprise fund, you're putting it all together. So if you look at the, the general fund, the budget, you have all that stuff separated out in the general fund. Then you have one sheet for the enterprise fund. At the end of the day, at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have no clue what it actually took to operate our own in-house public works department without one line item and separating it. Whereas if you separated it, then you could put all your capital, grant money in, in one account and then what that was spent on, and then you have your actual day-to-day budget of the public works department. At the end of the year, you say, "Hey, public works department, it cost us five hundred thousand dollars to run this department and we took in, we took in eight hundred thousand dollars." You know, whatever it is.
Okay, but this was.
Because one of what Tony said on that rate study, if, if we don't actually know, if we don't actually know what is the cost of that department, yes, there's a lot of long-term capital improvements that we need to make. I get that. But how can we plan, if we don't actually even know what the day-to-day?
We're not making any long-term capital improvements. It's all basically operating at this point, except for the capital expenditures on equipment purchases.
This is an operating.
It's an operating budget. There is no, so, and hence my confusion. There are no capital outlays in here, aside from maintenance and operations.
And this is, this budget is, I mean, there's a line item for everything. There's really no way to, to break it down anymore than it is.
Right, and the, and the capital expenditure side, the, the bigger projects that you're talking about, those are coming out of that ARPA fund and that's why Michelle is saying that that's where we'll have a capital budget, capital outlay fund, to be exact.
See, we've already gotten the other revenue in and I have to show it in the budget. That's why it's, it's in the revenue because we've already received it and therefore we're gonna, and now.
So the mini X, ninety thousand, that line item, it'll be up there next year? The twenty thousand?
It will not be up there.
That'll be up there next year.
Not because this is just all stuff that we can start.
This is our operating budget for this fiscal year.
We have nothing to start off with.
Okay.
Not even a rake, a nail.
Yeah, we have nothing. We have a truck shed.
My, my background is dealing with, you know, a hundred-plus million dollar.
Right, this is governmental accounting, which is a little bit different than regular.
So I checked with my accountant about governmental accounting, which is just a balance, you know, it's a balance. Balance income, balance back, balance in and out.
That's exactly right.
And so I tried to get the explanation from him about how a hundred and nine thousand dollars in depreciation, which is, you can't, you're not spending depreciation. If I depreciate my car, I'm not spending that money. Yeah, I might be getting new brakes, tires, but the depreciation, a hundred and nine thousand dollar line item is, is not allocated for anything.
Right, but the difference with the private sector is on depreciation, there are tax advantages to depreciation that we can't avail ourselves from because we are not, we don't pay tax. We're nonprofit, we're not, we're governmental. So I mean, getting into these, you know, it's not like private sector. It's never going to be the same. We have a different function and, and our accounting principles frankly are different. We actually had, there's a different accounting board that sets principles for governmental accounting. The governmental accounting standards board, GAZBIE, sets this, and they have all their own language, Michelle's language, but you know, they, they.
So I put in an email and then we'll let this in. I put it in an email to you and I asked you if you could just simply ask the new accounting company that we hired, if they feel that anything that is a one-time purchase and then also that three hundred and sixty thousand ARPA, if that should be separate in this fund. I put that email a week and a half ago and asked you if you would ask them that. They're the ones that do our.
I can ask them, but they're gonna want me to do it exactly the way it is. Because revenues and expenditures have to match. Debits and credits, that's what we're working with here, nothing else.
I get it, but I think what the mayor's talking about, see how this breaks out buildings?
Right, I understand that, but we don't have all that in, in.
You do, it's there, you just didn't separate it. It is there.
Okay, tell me where the buildings are.
The, so the example of administrative, you're running a town, so then you've got a building. You're running an enterprise fund, you've got a mini X, you've got a truck. Those are one-time purchases, not expenses. You're not doing them, you're not paying for them every year. You're paying for them every month. They're separate. That's, that's the same as like.
It's, they're separate.
Administrative would be.
Yeah, I'm not really sure why this breaks out under buildings, to be honest with you. Some of these.
Well, I can take it off a building, but I mean, I don't understand what's wrong with it. I mean, this is broken down.
No, it is. And we, Michelle and I worked really hard, Michelle especially, in coming up with language to take some of the cloudiness away from the previous budget, which had a lot of consulting services or contractor services.
Yeah.
So she worked hard to kind of spell out the detail in the budget. So you all knew what you were spending your money on and that's why you know there's a mini excavator as opposed to equipment purchase, which is what, you know, the, the previous language said. So that's, that's why the line item. But we can certainly have a conversation with the audit company, you know, get you an answer.
So the agenda item that we're on is to consider action for the budget for twenty-two slash twenty-three. Have all of the requirements in the previous ones been met? Were they outpassed? Is there any, anything that would hinder the budget who have actually taken on it? Are all the other motions passed? A through, A through?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have any questions about the budget? I went through the line item, my line item, as you guys answered a lot of questions. You did with the line numbers. So money can't be moved from one fund to the other. So a hundred and nine could not make its way to the general fund?
No, sir.
Water and sewer can never pay for a general fund. Water and sewer has to, it's all.
And that's why communities that have electric utilities benefit from having. Electric, electric utilities don't have the same kind of restrictions that water and sewer funds.
So your water and sewer budget now is that one point three.
Yes, sir.
One point three expenditures, one point three in revenue from our new water rates based on what we expect to sell.
Yes, sir. And that should.
We can move those funds within that department.
Yes.
How soon are you looking at implementing some type of performance analysis and pay rate study?
Well, there isn't money in the general fund for this year. It would have to be fiscal year twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Yes, sir. So it would be next July. But the board could always, you know, depending on what the revenues are, it always makes increases retroactive. That's the other thing.
I'll tell you, y'all, the reason I can ask some question I'm trying to figure out is, I feel like, I really feel like some employees that have been here for a long time without a doubt deserve more than just a cola. And so I don't know if they're, obviously if someone just started, they're not, they're not getting a raise, right? You wouldn't get the four thousand dollars.
No, I was not considered in any of the, that includes the cola. I don't get the cola.
When you did the numbers for the four thousand dollar increase, was that for all employees?
Yes, sir.
Part-timers too?
No, just all full-time employees.
And it was for all full-timers that had been here over?
No, it was for all.
All of them, so not over a certain amount of time? So my hesitation on asking you guys for a motion is that I really wish that we could figure out a way where twelve, twelve cents per one hundred, one hundred fifty thousand dollar house, that's a hundred and eighty dollar a year increase in their tax bill. I'd really like to see there's some way in the budget. So the hundred and nine can be moved. And that's really the only money in the budget that there's.
There is not a lot of fat in this budget, Mr. Mayor. I wish there were.
Do you have a total dollar amount for the twenty percent health increase, health insurance increase?
I don't have it in front of me now. We tried to bring that number down as well by exploring other options, but some of those deductibles are pretty steep, you know? So one way or another, employees are gonna pay for it. Exact number, I should say.
In detail, the budget, I mean, I went line item to line item and in detail, the budget is, in my opinion, is a good, it is a good budget. I mean, I did a lot of homework on every single line item that there was and it was only a few things that I didn't get answers back and that was one of them.
What about the insurance?
That, no, that, that one of them, the capital outlay. I mean, I looked at all the different contracts that were up there, you know, all the, all the different expenses and I know some of it for somebody that, when I first. I know some of it, for somebody, when I first looked at it, I was like, man, this is bogus, 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 bogus. But then, when you really dive deep into it, and you really research it, it's, it's not like we're paying exuberant costs for anything that we shouldn't. It's not like we're spending money on a bunch of stuff that we don't need. I mean, it really is a very conservative budget, from what I could find. I just wish there was a way, that raise. But I guess it is time, well, y'all take all the time you need. But at the end of this little session, conversation we're in right now, we either need to make the motion to table the budget, or make a motion to approve it.
Okay, remember, how many officers we got?
Eight, eight officers?
Oh, seven, I'm sorry. I'm still in accounting myself.
I mean, what's that, I mean, I've been here a long time, I have never gotten a big raise. And, you know, we all earn it, and, but we don't have the money. It's just not there. And then the issue with the twenty percent insurance, so either we get the big raise, and, and employees start going in with insurance, or we keep the twenty percent, and the town has to eat it. It's, it's, it's hard choices all around. Now, I think next year, when we're sitting here next year, that it's gonna be a completely different story, because those houses will be online right behind me, and we will have more of a tax base. We don't have it right now, and I think with inflation and the recession coming, we're in trouble as far as, um, uh, general fund, those, I mean, I can tell you, every month, the sales and use taxes since February have gone down, uh, probably about ten to twelve thousand dollars a month. That's a lot of money. That's because people are not shopping like they were. We get a, we get a partial, uh, we get a, we get a, um, as, as far as our population, we get a percentage of sales and use taxes from the entire county, which includes Rocky Mountain. So our sales and use taxes have been looking good, but in the past two months, they've looked really bad. And we're just, it's just not coming in. And I don't believe it will. The forecasts are that it's only, it's probably gonna, it's probably gonna not only just level off, but we'll get less last year, not next year. And we've already gotten less, a lot less than I thought we would.
We had it happen a few years ago, when economy was turned down, I mean, our tax, our sales tax money, it put a real page on the town more years ago there.
Exactly. And I think, and that's the same trend that's happening right now, which is a little scary, but, I mean, it's in black and white, I'm, I mean, it's, it's there, you can see it. Last, last month, we might've got twenty-five thousand dollars, this month, we got fifteen. That's a big deal. Huge.
So Walnut Cove is forty-seven houses. Forty-seven houses is gonna give us about seventy thousand dollars, about sixty to seventy thousand.
How many of those houses go to me?
I think they're mid to upper twos.
And so that, that, um, they've only bought permits, they're ten right now. Uh, and it's, I mean, it's not likely that any of the Bryson's Ridge houses will be here by next fiscal year, and we probably won't even have all forty-seven online for Walnut Cove. So in reality, we'll probably only have an extra sixty thousand dollars in tax revenue next year, which is not even enough for the hundred thousand, uh, for the raises. And then you're saying we can't afford to implement, is there any kind of, um, performance review plan? Like, does, is that part of your job? Do you sit down and do performance reviews with department heads and Michelle?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that being the policy.
Um, in the past, we have, um, when we had a former manager, um, not dead, but before that, we had all the performance reviews.
I do. I do it online.
Do you?
Since this is a budget, and this is my department, can I speak on it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I've met with the town manager several times on this, just begging and trying to get something figured out. And I understand, but you can't just make money up here. I understand that. But I also understand that I've got four of my, my, my patrol officers cannot survive on what they're making. They make thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars a year, which is almost equivalent to assistant manager of the budget hours. For these guys to do what they do when they come to work every day, okay? This is the best department Springo PD has ever had, in my opinion. And I believe that you could probably go to question anyone around town and get that same answer. What I would like to see, if it would be possible in any way, is if there is a three percent cost of living, if we could just give three thousand dollars to my bottom four patrol officers to make it equal to that four thousand, just for them, nothing for me, nothing for my lieutenant, and nothing for my quarter. Just to get them to where they can survive. Because we've all said tonight, over and over and over, inflation, everything's going up. Well, everything is going up, and they can't afford to pay for it.
Is that, is that possible?
We, we crunched those numbers, I had Sandra crunch those numbers, and they still didn't work in this budget. There's not, there's not a lot of extra money in this budget. How much extra is there?
Nothing.
Nothing.
So you're looking for... There's no fat in this budget.
I, I guess you have to ask yourself, do you wanna operate a town that's basically a police force and nothing else? Because there, there is not a lot that we can do. Oh, uh, the mayor's salaries and the commissioner's salaries, um, that's sixty-five hundred dollars, plus the budget's seven.
What if we give, if we give that up? I mean, well, I can't speak for nobody else, but what if I can line it up? I mean, that's up to you, if you, um, wanna give your salary. I mean, it is a small amount. I mean, then I would be what, a thousand dollars? I mean, it's just, I mean, it's a thousand dollars, so, that would be what the, that's it.
But I was just, yeah, I was thinking if you had three or four of them, you know, it's, it's, we all set them. We've got three.
Okay, so that's just gonna give, you know, that means also, definitely just gonna give them up at one time. It's, it's just gonna be a one-time thing, it's not gonna go hand salary. Because if you're gonna go on the salary, FICA, Medicare, pension, all that has to go off.
That is the...
If it was just, if it was just the salaries, we could give it to everyone. But it's everything. Pension, the pension obligations are huge, and we have to, that's statute, we have to give it. We cannot do that.
And one more thing I'd like to add is, all these people have been here, all these officers have been here, so they've occurred vacation time, they've occurred holiday time, they've occurred comp time. So pretty much everybody here, except for the newest officer who's behind me, has two-hundred-and-forty hours plus of vacation that's rolling over. So if an officer were to resign, returning to where you've noticed, the town's obligated to pay them their vacation time on top of their comp time. So we would have to do a payout of about three hundred hours. Okay, so you take that money, and that person's gone, so then that's coming out of their budget. Then you have to hire a new officer, and you have to buy him a new bulletproof vest, and you have to buy him new shoes, and you have to buy him new shirts and new pants. Then you have to send him to training, and you go through all of that to have a rookie that doesn't know her name.
About how much does it cost to let somebody go, or somebody quit?
Well, I mean, depending on...
Ten grand?
Depending on the hourly rate. I mean, if they have about three hundred dollars, three hundred hours set up, three hundred times their salary, so they'll probably get about four, about four thousand dollars scores. About about four thousand dollar check right then when they walk out of the door. And then to hire the new person, you're looking a thousand dollars for that. Nine hundred dollars for shirt, a hundred dollars for pants, a hundred dollars for boots. I mean, and then the training, and then the ammunition to go qualify, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot.
So to lose someone, and then hire someone and train them, is about an eighty-five hundred dollar expense?
I wouldn't quite say that much, I would say probably around six.
To lose them?
But it's not, it's not, it's not a money issue, it's a quality issue. We're, we're taking a step backwards and going right back to Springo PD being a training ground for rookies. And they stay here for a year, they get their general cert, and then they're gone. Right now, I have a outstanding group of guys that can't be replaced when you're talking about... The difference in the money is what we're gonna have to pay them when they leave, what we owe them in vacation.
Okay, I do have a question, um, from a legality standpoint. Here at the end, we look at a very, very, um, amazing idea. I know there's some legalities that's gonna come to it, so Mark, you may have to weigh in on it. So let's just say, I'm gonna pick on Terry, if she did a fundraiser, if she did a community fundraiser, and her community fundraiser was for, to donate fundraisers, so like a GoFundMe, but not a GoFundMe. If she did that and donated the funds for, you said the four?
Mm-hmm.
The four officers. Can she do that as a citizen legally?
It's not gonna go into the budget.
No. No, it, it would be like, like a one-time thing, right? She's saying like a one-time fundraiser that a citizen is donating to donate.
That would be fine, but their salaries aren't gonna change. You see what I'm saying? That's not gonna go into the budget.
Right, she's saying, she's saying that, that money will go to those officers.
And that's fine, that's not gonna change their salary.
It's like a donation that...
That's fine.
That won't touch the budget.
Yeah.
Listen, I, I appreciate all the professionalism that the chief has brought to the department, and the guys, the officers who work there, I appreciate all that. But we can't ever compete with the Nashvilles even, let alone the Rocky Mountains and Wilsons. We can't compete with the sheriff's office. We will never, with twelve hundred residents, we just cannot generate the kind of revenues to pay the salaries that they pay.
So Andrew, I have to cut you off, and, and I'm not trying to be mean or anything like that, because that's just not me. But we keep saying we can't compete, but I, I don't think we're trying to compete. But what I am gonna say for these officers, and what these officers have done, and I'm trying not to get choked up about this. I had a relative who passed away. I had two officers who stopped over there, not because they were cold, they seen stuff going on, they stopped over there. When my husband had his elevator accident, every single one of those officers stopped by my home. I've been sick, those officers have stopped by my home. Everything that has happened, and I hear other citizens say this about these officers, these officers are not just officers, the stuff that they go over and beyond to do, they don't have to do. So it's not a competition, it's a matter of them doing some of the stuff that they do that half the time chief don't even know, I tell you, that you, your officer just did this. So that's what it's about for me.
And I understand, and I respect that from Commissioner Wilkins. I think the chief's premise is that retaining officers is difficult, and if it becomes a question of money, this is where I'm talking about, we cannot compete with these other departments. If it's a question of money, we can't ever match the money. So if it's, if it's market conditions that he's talking about, we can't match the money. I wish that...
They probably can't match our chrome rate at Rocky Mountain. They can't get this low, no way.
I mean, I'm not stopping to match money.
That's right.
I'm not stopping to, for survival.
There's no question.
Because, I mean, you said I can't, Nashville, I, he just left Nashville and came to me. I can get quality, but they have to be able to eat.
I understand that, to, you know, honesty. Your, your temperature is not in question, we, we all honest. I, I know what they did. But if Jeff Bogdan said, no, no, he's not, you even got it or you ain't got it?
We don't have it.
And they're saying they don't have it. It has, it, it's no reflection on, on, whether I want you to, I want you to have it. If you ain't got it, you ain't got it. We keep putting time in, I'm talking about, but we don't have it.
I want everyone to have it. I mean, I want them to get a raise. I want to raise myself. I mean, if I quit tomorrow, you're not gonna be able to pay somebody what I make and do what I do, just like you're not gonna be able to do the same thing with the police department. I'm sorry, we just don't have it. I'm one of the lowest-paid employees here, and I do a lot of the work. It's just, it is what it is, we don't have the money. We did, I'm getting up there, that money is... You guys can get your word here, Phil?
Me? It's in the board's hands.
Huh?
It's in the board's hands, ma'am. I mean, I, I, like I, me and the town manager talked, we don't have money. The only way possible is to raise taxes. I think raising, I think raising taxes for every employee to get a four thousand dollar increase is out of the question. What cost, that's absurd. But if you could do, I don't know, I don't know, something small, something to get by, something to get the bottom four at least up around thirty-eight, which would be with the four thousand. I don't know, I don't know if you can do that, I have no idea. That's...
It's insulting that you all are not thinking about me and Sandra. We work very hard, I don't hear anyone saying that the administrative staff needs a raise. I hear no one saying that at all. That's insulting, very much so. We do a lot of, if we weren't there, what would happen? What would happen?
No one's saying what now?
Yeah, no one's, um, thinking about the, me and Sandra. I mean, if we weren't there, what would happen?
I thought that this four thousand was across the board for us.
But what I'm saying is, right now, we're only talking about the police department. And I love the police department, it's a little insulting when you think about, we're there every day. So we work Saturdays and Sundays sometimes. We get there at seven-thirty, sometimes we don't leave till seven, or Saturday, I work for four hours. I'm not gonna get paid for that. I'm just saying, I mean, across the board, we're all getting paid low. So let's think about it as a whole, not just two or three people.
I think we are thinking about it as a whole, um, it's just more so the assumption. So I will apologize, because I'm not coming out saying it, but...
Well, I appreciate that.
You know, you know, I spoke with you, I know what you and Sandra do, but to me, it's more of holistic, because I guess I'm under the assumption that if we give the four officers, then that would include you and Sandra.
I'm sorry, I couldn't talk too much to you, but I'm gonna do a lot of this, but, and I tried as hard as I could to find the money, and it's just not there. I worked for days and days, days, dreaming about it, it's not there.
So at this point, we, we really need to get a motion to table the budget, or pass the budget. Um, or if there is specific recommendations that you want to change, you can make a, a motion with the changes, or if you can... So are any commissioners ready to make a motion to table the budget? Or are any commissioners ready to...
I don't see any to table, it's gonna be the same. I think I'm gonna have tomorrow or next fiscal, it'll be the same. They can't come up with a plan.
So then we gotta get a motion to pass it, if we're gonna table it. That's really the only, is that, that's the only two options, table or pass it?
To adopt the budget.
Hmm?
To adopt.
To adopt the budget.
So that says, oh, for me, are you, Michelle, Sandra, and you, right?
He's not, he's not.
No, I'm not.
He's not, he's not.
I'm just trying to count up to the board, add me in, please. And then general fund, it's just Sandra, Michelle, and you, and just me.
Okay, this, outside, I pulled the button, come on, man. I know you're on the side room. I guess I can go on the side room. Everything's exactly right.
I made the motion to adopt the budget.
Any discussion?
If, if I will ask this question, if we, by some miraculous godsend, find some money for the town here in the next twelve months, we can always get back to that meeting.
Sure. That's the budget amendment.
Me and the budget to help our employees.
Yes, sir.
At this point, we can prove what you've got balanced, what sort of ardenous need for, and say, we can handle it. Correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, we got a second. A motion to adopt budget, seconds on the floor. I will take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the budget carries. Our budget has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is the Walnut Cove lights. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, this is, you'll see in your packets, the... This is, you'll see in your packets, the break sheet and a plan. Has some cut sheets or spec sheets for streetlights at Walnut Cove. In corresponding with Mr., with Tom White, Mr. White. He needs this approval to move forward with the streetlights at Walnut Cove. And I believe this is the last approval he needs so that he can turn everything over to the builder.
The Monticello gives a perfectly, according to the chart, gives a perfectly round picture, or a light spread. And then the traditional, let me see. Yeah, the traditional gives kind of a, right, kind of a rectangular shape. And so my question is, one, the light distribution pattern doesn't really say how far it's spreading. But then, two, is the light distribution, when it is more egg-shaped, is it running parallel to the road, or is it running perpendicular to the road? So it's spreading across the sidewalk, or it's spreading to the other side of the road?
That's a good question. I don't really have an answer.
Because there's not many lights in that neighborhood?
No. I believe there were a total of six, if I recall correctly off the top of my head. So I can't...
Harry, man, show the math. Under 10% agree, the fiberglass with the post on top, not the wood lights.
I can't ask the vendor, the cost is the same to the town on the toll for the streetlights. So I can ask the vendor about the light pattern. So whatever the board's pleasure is, to cast it in a circle or to cast it, if it casts the globe towards the road, is that preferred?
No, like if it's gonna, so you got one here, let's say there's one here and one here. So that egg shape, is it gonna spread parallel to the road down the sidewalk? Or is all that spread just gonna go across the road and just be in the road? You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Is it gonna, is that long link gonna go down the sidewalk?
Is there preference?
I mean, it looks like it would spread more, but I don't know what they're saying. It's only 16-foot old. What does that outer edge spread look like at the ground? 10 feet spread? You know, what is the spread?
And so my question to the board is, which would you prefer to see? The round circular concentric circle or something like this?
I think what I'm getting is to what would give most light?
To the road.
To the road.
I guess that's my question. Is where do you want to cast the light?
Do you want the light to be as few dark spaces as possible? I think is what you would want from a safety standpoint, really, Chief.
I like the rectangle. The only bad thing about the rectangle... These are not starter homes, but these are homes, affordable homes. So around here in this area, you're gonna have, you're gonna have your police officers, you're gonna have your public safety officers, you're gonna have fire EMS, you're gonna have nurses, you're gonna have people living in these houses who work outside. And I can tell you from experience, those big rectangle lights are super bright and you cannot sleep when they're, everything's lit up. It's great for crime prevention. But I know when I worked in Knightville, we got tons of complaints because they were so bright. I would suggest something that would light up the yard but cast towards the streets. And the rectangle ones don't do that. The rectangle ones have a straight flat bar and it shines completely out.
So it shines in houses too, huh?
Yes.
So then the circle ones, things better?
The circle ones are more pinpointed towards the road, but they're brighter. The rectangle ones show the property, but inside the house. So it's not, it really depends. I don't know if you can, if you could split it, if you could do cul-de-sacs a certain way and intersections a certain way, I don't know. Well, if you'd like, I could get, I could get some of the guys at Knightville, like when they go to the jail or something, they could drive through Nashville and just get some pictures just to show how much it is lit up. You see the buildings that we have out on the bridge out here? Those are rectangles, and you see how bright those are?
Well, that's also a higher, these are only 4,500.
Yeah, I know, but you've got two that are lighting up. So what are the ones at the bridge, footprint lumin on those?
Those are high wattage.
So what are the ones here that we're talking about?
These are 50 watt bulbs, so they're very low.
What's the lumens on them?
4,500.
4,500? Okay, put it in perspective, a police flashlight that we hold that will blind everybody's instruments a thousand. So, but it's pinpointing to one area. 4,500 spread out, it just really depends on what you're trying to light up.
Can we get Duke to tell us the footprint? So like if that light is at 16-foot on top of the pole, by the time it gets to the ground, is this, is this 10 feet, 12 feet? Is it, you know, 12-foot by 6-foot? What is it? And then we'll be able to see exactly where it's gonna shine, right?
7 lights.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's only a few lights, Ben.
Yeah. The...
6 lights in that whole neighborhood, 47,000 lights. Cheryl, do we, does this need a motion? No, this is not a motion. This is not an actual item.
Oh, you do, you have to approve it because you need to approve the, basically, it's an expenditure.
So do y'all want to, well, this is part of the budget? Does it have to pass? Well, we already passed the budget.
Right.
So does this need to pass?
Yes, because it's an additional expenditure.
They're the same cost.
Are costs the same?
Yeah.
Costs on...
All the directions I provided you are all the same.
So we can approve it, can we approve it, but we just wanna, we just wanna select which light fixture we want?
Sure.
So we have to approve it conditional, I make a motion to approve it condition being that we won't diagram up the light that we cast before we choose the final lamp.
Yeah. Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so that goes well. Next item on the agenda is the railroad bridge. Yes, that's right, I'm sorry. Budget amendment, item K, budget amendment 22-06. So we are moving money from the revenues, basically for water tap connections, sewer tap connections, to pay for a pump and to pay for the water meters in Walnut Cove for the 10 houses.
The Robin call, the...
Yes, and part is.
I'll make a motion to be approved, budget amendment 20-22-06, as a...
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks.
Mr. Mayor, I met with NC DOT and their consultant, engineering consultant out at the bridge. You can see the state of some of the, this is the refurbished pedestrian bridge, by the way. This is after they did the work. And they, we discussed that the work is far from complete there. According to DOT, there was no scope of work pre-arranged. So basically what you're getting is a bridge with a new deck and a fresh paint job. But you can see there are a lot of safety issues. My concern is that this becomes the town liability, liability if the town takes it over. So my question to the board tonight is whether you want to pursue a revamped scope of work with NC DOT to actually refurbish the bridge properly, or the town would prefer to see it dismantled? Because again, this could be, even in a refurbished state, is a liability for the town.
NC DOT would pay for the additional...
Well, they haven't made a commitment, they want to enter a local agreement before they do anything else either that. They have kind of made a tacit agreement to either refurbish the bridge, but they have agreed, they did agree for demolition or salvage. That part they agree?
This, this bridge has a lot of historical, what do you call, sentiment about it for a lot of people that live here.
And I understand that, and that's why I brought it to the floor.
It's a landmark, you know, it seems like not a big thing, it's a bridge, right? For some people, it's a landmark, they grew up, they don't wanna see it torn down. Some people, maybe the people that live right next door to it, wish it never existed.
Right. The thing about it is, it does go into their yard, and I have not found an easement for the town. So that's an issue.
Is there one? There is, right?
No.
There's no easement?
That's an issue.
And DOT has no easement.
So that little sidewalk that goes through there is...
On private property, you can tell that. So that's another issue.
Saw's up. I mean, that saw's up. The homeowner could shut it down. So not easy.
I mean, I agree, that is kind of a futility. I mean, it can be there, but you just can't get off of it and open somebody else's property if they wanted to cut that off.
All right, so the call action for this would be to have the manager talk to DOT about an additional scope of repairs, or to have the DOT to repair it, or it could be tabled if you guys want to talk to your constituents about how they feel about tearing the bridge down. So we make a motion to have him do the DOT to do an increased scope of repair, get the DOT to tear it down, or table it for you to talk to constituents. Right?
Yeah, that's right.
What do you think?
I was just, they run a bridge. When Buddy talked to us about fixing it, you know, the DOT was gonna fix it, I thought that was great.
We see the results of it.
I know. It's 3 months ago.
And for the city DOT, they hired a contractor to do it. They hired to do the work themselves, but...
I have to work. You got to schedule it. Is that trying to do this to bits?
The only thing that's really, which I go across a lot, there's one on the railroad track side, there's one pipe that comes down that's missing the corner of the end. Some of the mesh metal fencing that would keep somebody from jumping out is kind of folded back in some places. And then where the steps meet the deck, there's like the first board is missing. It's a little bit of a trip hazard, but the steps are extremely steep anyway. The steps themselves are a hazard, but you'd think anybody going over would know that.
Some of the mesh is also separated from the...
Yeah, kind of wavy like that. It'd peel off a little bit, which is a hazard to cut yourself, but it would also be simple to fold it back and tack it back in place. What is it? Where y'all's on the way?
I have a question, since y'all have a lot of pressure tonight. When y'all annex out from Webb Mill, you'll take that bridge too?
Yeah, I know, right? That's a landmark. That's a historical landmark.
Take a few more dollars and re-add that with more.
I mean, the state is offering this metal, and folks in all over the world are...
Nobody knows where the bridge was built.
I know the state, but that's y'all's decision.
No, it's the state's.
Imprensa... Is it a liability if someone decides to do something off that bridge?
I'm scared of that bridge. It did grow in fact, break today.
Well, see, it's a...
Only if they, if there was an accident, and the accident was caused by the bridge.
I tell you what, they said it was an accident.
Look, I make a motion that you talk to them about fixing it properly, and just see if they'll fix it properly. That might say, what do you think, Tom?
And then have them go talk to the homeowner and buy that piece of land.
Just fix it, just fix it and let it be what it's gonna be, you know? Just fix it, and if the homeowner, I wouldn't talk to them.
In the brick house?
In the brick house, which is on there. And they don't, they're not opposed to it. They said they've seen a few people walk through and they just stay around the sidewalk, they don't come to the owner or anything.
You should do the maintenance.
So I make a motion that you talk to DOT about fixing it right.
You have a second? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, so we're gonna get a vote. Next item on the agenda, we're gonna skip down to police chief report. Commissioner Wilkins has asked that we go ahead and push this up. So chief, we're gonna go ahead and do the police chief report.
All right, we have six incident reports. 196 total calls from service, 45 traffic stops, 131 security checks, three traffic accidents and zero streetlights reported out. As a couple of y'all saw, the box truck and trailer that were stolen from the dug through, the guys did a fantastic job on that. We were able to recover the box truck and recover the stolen trailer and make an arrest within three days of the original report. All the property inside the box truck, all the property that was inside the trailer was recovered, except for one generator, which was traded for heroin in downtown Rocky Mountain. We were not able to find that one. We were able to find two lawn mowers, a chainsaw, two backpack blowers, and some other tools that were not stolen from there, that we haven't got the owners of those yet. And there was a break-in at the solar farm outside of town. And John Clark, who we're familiar with, with the building over there, he, his building was broken into, and we recovered his stolen chainsaw and tools that were taken from the sanctuary. And also that chainsaw, and also you were talking about the truck.
That chainsaw, I'm close to replacing those. Thank you for helping us on Street. I still thank you so much for figuring out a way to block people on Con Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got that, and also the truck that we were talking about. Myself and Corporal Walling, we're working on that. We're trying to find a vehicle to replace my Dodge Durango, and also to be able to have a truck to go get new equipment through the Military Department of Defense that we were talking about. We were able to find a 2015 Chevrolet 2500 HD at Norfolk, Virginia, at the Air Force Base. It's a crew cab truck with 36,000 miles, and we were able to get that for free. We picked it up last week. We've got the titles, we got the titles in last week, and we'll be transferring it once we get the new budget stuck in.
Is it been parked over here? Is it the Silverland Park or...
No, it's white, it's over at AMS Auto. I've just got it over there right now for when the new budget comes in so they can go ahead and service it and put new fluids in it. There is a crease down the side of the back of the truck, it looked like somebody was driving into the military and ran into something. So the outside panel needs to be fixed, and I got a quote on that today for 2500.
Hopkins and Branch were writing tickets yet?
We're doing verbal warnings until that month is up from those signs, just like we said in the meeting.
Next item. Vire link left. Next item on the agenda, we'll do the attorney's report.
Yeah, I have nothing to report, but once again, thank you for renewing the contract.
Code enforcement, they're not here. But you didn't tell us about, how we haven't got to your report yet. 205, I was gonna say 205 on code enforcement.
Town manager on the way?
Questions I had about code enforcement, can I just email them to you? And see if they can answer them? Okay. Next on the agenda is the town manager's report.
So we covered much of this tonight, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I want to point out, we're prioritizing supply-side improvements on the water system. That includes standardizing the wells, returning the automation. I wanted to discuss 205 West Main Street briefly. So I did receive the remediation plan from the industrial hygienist, provided it to the demolition contractor, and I'm waiting for him to remobilize. So hopefully we can make that happen in the next week or so. And then hopefully we'll be a long, distant memory. Something I didn't cover, you know about the boardroom air conditioner unit? At least the initial lead time on that replacement is three to five weeks, so we may be having our next board meeting right in disparity room. So that's a definite possibility. We did contract with Dixon Construction to do the sidewalk improvements in front of the South Pine Street properties, Ash Street, Ash Street, Ash and Frank Street, and also the stretch of, on, on South Pine Street between Citizens Bank and that, Mexico. We will have a planning board meeting this month for all those people out there who are clamoring for a planning board meeting. I've received a, a major subdivision today, and we'll be reviewing that and setting it on the planning board agenda. Downtown development board, we're waiting for that mural, our queue for the responses to come in, they are due at the end of the month. The audit representatives, you heard Michelle Say, Price Scott Adams, they have requested to start the pre-audit activities, so. That's about all I've got, that if you haven't already been updated.
Commissioner Jeffers, in January, when we met with Chief Green over at the fire department, and he told us about the, basically the fault spot flow reasons, where Enviralink came town, turned all the well pumps on when they were doing their flow test, told us about multiple broken hydrants, no keys to be able to get into the well pumps if there was a fire, non-automated refilling of the towers. After we met with the chief in January, did you meet with town staff?
Absolutely. We've talked to them numerous times. Right now, Rooton is doing our, they're helping us with our 3.7 million, has that report that was given to us, that the fire department got for us, for the hydrants, they have that. And as you see in the budget, there is at least, I think that's four hydrants, I believe, at least four hydrants that are in the budget now, not including the 3.7, if some of them funds can be used for that. So Rooton does have it. I'd like to ask a question toward Andrew, when do we think we'll start to get these specific projects from, when do you think that might be?
I'm hoping it sometime in July, that we can at least get them to do the preliminary cost estimates. We're already getting quotes from contractors on some of the other items, including standardization.
And, and so that has been done. Andrew just touched on the tanks, they're getting, we've already got that process to work on the tanks. We do have two generators at the sewer treatment plant that run. We do have a generator at one of the lift stations. As far as the wells go, no. But we've discussed it, they've already looked at it, Bobby and them, to implement something on maybe the two largest producing wells, so we would have some water during that time period. And so there is action that is being taken. I, I want to thank Jason for writing the community note about it. I think it's what's needed. I, I feel that, that our, our staff is doing everything they can in existence to put out fires every time we find something new. And I think it's good to have that brought up, so it does open a light up to us and lets us see it and discuss it. I will say this about the development, I talked to Tom White a couple of times, he has a subcontractor, which was the original subcontractor, coming back. He should be dropping equipment off this week. He had, he has been told there will be a pipe crew and a grading crew, and the grading crew will start on the pads. So that will start taking place. The builder is now going to start without power. They, Duke Energy cannot get the Z strips that go in the transformers. I don't know what that is. Duke's behind on four or five communities with those supplying that, so the builder has decided to come in there and start building with, I guess, generators, to be honest with you. So the buildings, the houses should start, and those forty-seven will be done very quick. They're supposed to do four at a time, and he says they will be done very quickly. That whole development will go. That's what I'm being told. Let me ask you, this is a good question.
What question you're doing?
They're going to be built, they're not sold, they're built, but you have stacks on the grid.
Yes.
So that's, that's Tom White's thing. And so, yes, a lot of those things we discussed, the town has looked at and has started the process.
The SCADA, the, or whatever, the system that we currently have, which is, I guess, like a barbaric system, it's former SCADA, what is the cost to get that? Have you got, what the cost is, are we talking about like thirty thousand to rehab that system? Or are we talking about like ten thousand to get it functional?
Bobby just received a price, well, actually hasn't received that price yet. He talked, spoke to a contractor, and he's supposed to be getting a price in the next week or so. On restoring the automation to the wells.
Right. And then the keys, where were the keys when the fire happened?
The key, we have a set of keys in our office, but that's only thankfully to the good graces of former Mayor Walton, that he provided us a copy. We didn't have keys.
We discussed this, we discussed this already at length, and the next event will have someone else, I feel, I think it's been discussed, I don't know. It will not be Enviralink that has to run here in an hour and a half. We're, we're going to respond with our own people.
And it wasn't even about keys, it was about the fact that we couldn't hear them.
Nobody could raise them.
You couldn't raise them.
Raise, yes, nobody would respond.
Oh, respond, that's not.
He figured out he was getting fired, he just left.
And I ask these questions because if, if you were made aware of not proper flow into the towers, no keys, made aware of that in the first week of February, then those keys should have been something.
We acquired those keys.
But the fire department never got into them.
The fire department doesn't want them.
With the keys.
They don't want them.
And, and to be honest with you, when we have our own personnel, we don't necessarily want the fire department to have them.
Well, they, they don't want them. They don't want the responsibility.
Right, you need to know what you're doing.
Okay, all right, and I get that. But how long was it after they made notice that they needed the wells turned on before they were turned on? Was it a town staff that took the keys and unlocked it? Was that fire that night? The night of the fire?
Yeah, it was probably a good forty-five minutes. But the fact of the matter, not having the keys wasn't the problem. Enviralink wasn't answering the phone. They had the keys, they didn't answer the phone. So we, we didn't have anybody else to call but Enviralink.
We've known Enviralink has been subpar for.
Right, but they have the on-call service, it's supposed to be on-call for twenty-four hours, and they wouldn't answer the phone.
My concern here is that Commissioner Jeffers brought several things to your attention in the first week of February, and had those things been addressed in February, then we would not have experienced the excessively low water during the fire. Because with a system like you're talking about, it could have been rehabbed, the well pumps could have come on, kept the towers full, and then they were. And so that's, that's my concern, is that after we met with Chief Green, he gave us a list of stuff to the town. There's another impression that Commissioner Jeffers came and talked to, and those issues were all passed along to you, but some of them that impacted the fire that night were never addressed, that should have been addressed.
But, but we got a plan now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, because sometimes we have to, unfortunately, we had to go through that in order to know what to do the next time. So we have a plan right now. Remember, you don't want to go home?
Mm-mm.
So I guess that's what I'm looking at, is that we do, we got.
And I'm not, and I know everybody wants to leave, I just want to say this about that incident. All our wells are running, we're getting two hundred gallons a minute. That's it. They, when they set up, they set up to pump twenty-five hundred gallons a minute, that's what they set up, that's what they want. We, if, if we turned our wells on immediately, we get two hundred, two hundred million, or twenty, twenty, two hundred gallons a minute. That's it. That's why there are tankers. The problem was, it was the timeframe of getting Enviralink here. They've addressed it, they understand it, and they now have our own employee that's going to be doing that now. The fire department, I, I asked Travis to do it and give it to them, and they did not refuse it, and he says, we cannot be responsible, or don't want to be responsible for going in and turning wells. So I said, fine with it, and Andrew and them have dealt with it. We've got to understand that that system, our system and our water system is not, and I say this in the right way, it's not set up to fight that kind of, it's just not set up, we're not. No, a lot of municipalities aren't set up to fight that amount and do that. I think they did an incredible job of what they did and how they had to do it. But I just, yeah. Yeah. It's not, two hundred gallons is, we got them all running, it's two hundred gallons. And we have addressed the tanks, that we don't know what's in it, we're working on getting the sensors so we know what's in the tanks, we're getting the system set up to where we can fill these tanks and make sure they're full, so the, that process has started. In February, we would have had funds in the first.
In, in September of last year, I mentioned all the broken valve caps on Main Street, they were never replaced, they're still missing a broken cap on Main Street for the valve to cover. And then also in October of last year, I sent in a hydrant on the corner of Railroad that was leaking really bad right at the pedestrian bridge, sent that over in an email in October.
There's twenty in the middle.
And there's probably about fifteen work orders for Enviralink to fix hydrants that have not been done.
This is why, the town has moved to having its own department. This thing's just, and why the state of the system is what it is.
All right, and then one final thing, so that I know they're all ready to go. About six weeks ago, when you started CCing off, replying off, when I sent you an email?
That's so that the board could be aware of everything that was going on, so that they had an idea, so, but the entire board gets an idea.
Do you do that with them, when they send you an email? Do you CC off, so like if he sends you?
I never send an email. I'm sending emails at three fifty a.m.
Three fifty a.m.? Who sent them three fifty a.m.?
You have.
I sent an email three fifty?
Yes, you did, Mr. Mayor. So if you want to make this some type of, if you want to compel me to, to disagree with you, I will disagree with you. You are an absurd individual.
Can we have a closed session for this?
No, ma'am, if, you'll be lucky if you don't get my resignation.
No, 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 that can't happen. That can't happen. Oh, my God.
Good night.
Good night.
Mr. Mayor, make your points.
We need him right now.
I will call adjourned in the meeting, Mr. Mayor, for a change. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency. The Spring Hope License Plate Agency is recently under new management and features short lines and a friendly staff. Dealer work is always welcome, notary services are available, and copies can always be made. Wildlife services, hunting and fishing licenses, boat registrations, and boat title work is also available. Visit the Spring Hope License Plate Agency on Ash Street five days a week, Monday through Friday, nine o'clock to five o'clock. Once again, tonight's meeting is sponsored by the Spring Hope License Plate Agency.